I'm just gonna try to get through the opening stuff before President Wells gets here. So I'm gonna call the meeting to order at 3:09.
There she is. She made it.
Please rise to the flag salute. I'm sorry, I don't have a microphone. Rich. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I will make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. President Wells, floor is yours.
Okay, well, thank you very much for making your way and finding your way to our beautiful space. We're very excited to be here today to talk about our strategic plan, to do our mid-year update. And this is really the true cornerstone of a strategic plan is that updating process and then that opportunity to have some dialogue at the end. So as you can see, our full leadership team is here. Everybody in this room has had some responsibility to this plan. We are going to make this really tight for you. We've presented our strategic plan two other times to you in different ways, different formats. This is a real tight format for us. And we think that we could get through this in about an hour, fifteen, hour twenty is our goal, so that we can have the remaining time available for questions. And we do ask for the board that we have copies for you of the presentation. Do you have those in front of you?
No.
No, okay, so Dustin is running to get those. And we would ask that you write some questions on there. We would like to keep the continuity of the program going. It's a very fluid message that we've really, as I said, it's really tight and it's connected. And so we do ask that you just write down your questions and then we could get to them at the end so that we can keep that continuity going of the entire presentation. It certainly feels a lot shorter if we're able to do that. So kicking off our presentation today, we're gonna start with our high school administration, our co-principals Drew Stewart and Kim Decatrelle.
Good evening. Department of Education, President Wells, thanks for having us. We're gonna jump right in and then first we'll introduce our team. Phil Chang just ran out of the room to look for our copies, so he'll be back. And I think Ms. Joe may already be doing that as well. So they are invaluable members of our team as our assistant principals. And they'll be joining us shortly and certainly be here for the question and answer period when we get to that. So we just kinda wanna set the stage a little bit. The theory of action that we've used as a school this year to try to develop the work that we're trying to do is that effective collaboration fosters the internal coherence that we need in order to achieve our goals of excellence. And I think here is your pamphlets. And so that collaboration for us as a school started on day one with our staff on our welcome back day. And on that day, one of the things that we did was we chose as a group collectively through a collaborative process, our theme for the year, which in this case ended up being "Celebrate Progress Over Perfection." So if academic excellence, excellence in all that we do is our ultimate goal, how can we get there and why do we wanna celebrate progress? The main reason is is we understand that all our students come to us with different needs and from different places. So it's our responsibility to meet them where they are at and therefore help each student celebrate their progress ultimately towards what we're gonna talk about, which is one year's growth in one year's time.
So our journey so far towards the progress that we've made, as Mr. Stewart said, began day one, opening day. We presented our staff with all of the school-wide data, made meaning of that, introduced the goals, made sure everyone understood what they were, and then collaboratively came up with action steps that we were gonna take to make sure we are attaining those goals. We also, as departments, planned different strategies. So across the school, each department had a strategy for how they were going to address the different goals. Some departments are addressing multiple goals at once, for example, and some goals don't apply to a particular department. So they have unique strategies. In September, we had to use all of this information to establish a focus, right? There were many things to do. We can't do it all at once. Which steps will we take first? We prioritized our action and we finalized our plans. Now, in October, we have some data. We had been administering a diagnostic and then our first project check, school-wide, and we looked at, okay, who was making progress and who was not? What do we need to do next? At this point, we're at a point of reflection now in November. Which interventions do we need to implement for who? We're looking at our processes and determining, okay, what do we need to do differently in this next phase, in the next five weeks? And we're rethinking some of our assessments to make sure they're doing what we need them to do. And we'll talk more about that in just a minute. So preparing for the CASP is important. And we, you know, we are making strides in different ways and new ways this year. So we're always preparing for the CASP. In math, we administer IABs in the eleventh grade. But what's new this year is we now are also administering those in the ninth and the tenth grade. So we have these brand-new data sets that we can use to understand where our students are earlier in the process and be able to support them towards success in the eleventh grade.
Do you wanna explain IABs?
IAB, thank you. Interim Assessment Block. It is an assessment that tests a cluster of skills. We determine which ones we're going to test based on the data from last year. So in some of our weaker areas, we're giving some additional practice this year in a focused way. So in math, we've administered those to all of our students so far. ELA, we have what are called, I won't say WPEs. They're Writing Proficiency Exams. We had them for our ninth and our tenth grade. They were aligned to the state standards. We have done some work to retool those so that they are now aligned to the CASP directly. And we also created for the first time a writing proficiency exam for our eleventh grade. And those are the students who will be sitting for the CASP. And this is in alignment with the writing performance task on the CASP. That's a lot of progress. In math, just to look at some data points. This is the data around our summative scores last year. And this is the first IAB, the interim assessment, in a particular area this year. So Algebra II is one of our most important content areas to target for the CASP. And you can see, we're not quite here yet. This is the beginning of the process. This was the end of last year. So at this point, we have seventy-one percent of our students are nearing the standard, but they're not there yet. That makes sense. We're at the start of the school year. We haven't delivered all of the curriculum yet. And so we want to exceed this twenty-seven and this twenty-one, though. That is our goal. So in English, we're not using IABs in the same way. We are using, as I mentioned, the writing proficiency exams, but we're also using no red ink. So we can test the grammar and the multiple choice type questions in addition to the writing task. And so this is just an example of what that data looks like. This is one particular skill, identifying antecedents of a big pronoun and how each student has scored in a particular teacher's class. And so they're looking at that very granular data to know exactly where each and every individual student is.
And the students will know where they are themselves in real time. That's one of the nice things about this program. And I actually got to see this in one of our English classes recently. They can see it and make corrections as they go and can't move on until they reach that competency.
So our other academic goal is around advanced placement. We need more students enrolled in advanced placement, having access to that curriculum. We need more students who are already in the courses, sitting for the exam itself. And we need students who are taking the exam to score well, of course. We normally just think about the score, but we want all of those pieces. So you've seen this data before. You actually have this, Dustin presented it to you in a previous meeting. But this shows our growth, our ups and downs, actually, over the last five years. At this point in time, we have four hundred and thirty-one students enrolled and they're planning to take a total of eight hundred and sixty-seven exams, so...
Remember that you referenced the total number of students last year was three hundred and forty-five and only taking seven hundred and fourteen exams.
So this is already an improvement. We're wanting to grow engagement in advanced placement. Computer Science, there's one more. We also have a new class already, AP Computer Science Principles, in addition to AP Computer Science A. So this is more of a survey-type course where it's more accessible to a wider range of students. And so we've added a course, we've added enrollment, we have a plan for taking more exams, and we'll see how the scores do. Graduation rate is our third academic goal. We are looking to improve our graduation rate by targeting supports for students who are economically disadvantaged and students with disabilities specifically. At this point in time, for example, we have, well, wait, before I say that. One way we're doing that is collaborating more and regularly. So as an admin team, we are meeting with the special education department chairs and department and case carriers. We're meeting with the counseling team. We're having special education and general education collaborate interdisciplinary during our collab time Wednesday mornings. Our counseling team is implementing all of these interventions along the way to identify, monitor progress, and provide support throughout the year. At this point in time, we're looking at our D and F list. Our ten-week grades just came out. And we know that we have three hundred and sixty-one students with at least one D or F. So now the next step is following up with those students. Maybe we're having a student support team meeting for students who are off track for that one year's growth in one year's time. Perhaps we're connecting them to intervention supports such as Learning Lab and later in the year, Summer School. Perhaps there's something else going on which is causing this interference with their academics. So we're connecting them to Norman Aid Wellness Center. Or they need to have more of a vision for the possibilities of their future and we're connecting them to the College and Career Center. We have individual advising meetings. And, you know, I can really just go on and on, but I will stop. Graduation rate is something that we're taking a very close look at from beginning to end.
All right, so moving out of our academic goals specifically into our next one, which is career readiness. We are taking sort of a three-pronged approach for this. One of those, the first one, is enhancing career pathways. So we used to be called ROP. Now Career Technical Education Pathways. Our amazing KBEV students are one of our shining examples of that career pathway. Thank you guys for being here. And so we are constantly trying to build those programs up. And so one of the ways in which we're doing that this year is receiving, applying for more grant money, specifically for our fashion, our medical science academy, as well as our coding pathways to try to bring in more resources for those particular programs. As Ms. Decatrelle mentioned earlier, we've added a new AP Computer Science course this year. And all of our sophomores on our PSAT, they were able to participate through our Navion software to look at their, explore their interests and their aptitudes for their post-secondary life, their careers and that sort of thing. So that's one of the ways in which we're doing it. A second way in which we are working on our career readiness is increasing our community partnerships. Through our College and Career Center, we've gone on many different career tours so far this year already. Some of those have been in the real estate and business, hospitality and culinary, sorry about that, robotics and engineering, and in the legal realm. We've had tours for all of those areas so far already this year. Our third prong of our career readiness goal is expanded programming for our dual and concurrent enrollment. So getting students access to college-level courses with college professors or with their own teachers here at the high school, but receiving college credit. And so we already have been speaking with Santa Monica College this year for new dual enrollment courses for digital media arts as well as MSA. And we actually added American Sign Language this year as a concurrent enrollment course. Social emotional learning is a very hot topic right now, especially post-lockdown and students' distance learning and all of that. We know that it's super, super important. So we have taken a few different approaches of that in order to try to tackle some of the issues that we're seeing. One of those was with our freshmen. We had something called the SOS program that is created through the Norman Aid along with our comprehensive school counselors. And that was taking every single freshman on campus this year. The goal was to take every single freshman, have them go through some mental health curriculum, take a survey, and then identify any students that were coming to us their first couple of weeks of high school with major needs in the areas of mental health and mental wellness. And out of that, talking to all three hundred ninth graders, we found three hundred, or, excuse me, thirty-three students that needed additional counseling that were referred to Norman Aid for some immediate follow-up. And some of them are seeking ongoing help as well. PBIS is another one of the cornerstones to our social emotional learning. We are gonna continue to build on our award-winning program here. We have an awesome new site team that have been doing some work. One of their major goals was increasing the visibility of the PBIS core values as well as the celebrations, which we've done. We just finished a rebrand that has been introduced to the staff for our new core values. It's gonna be introduced to the students very soon. We've also had two very successful lunchtime activities so far, sort of PBIS rallies, raising that awareness for the PBIS program. The third one is connectedness. And this is definitely a work in progress. So we had some very successful, we have tons of clubs on campus. We had a very successful club summit and club fair day at the beginning of the year, trying to get information out there for students to get involved in addition to some of the other ways that they already do with performing arts, athletics, things like that. And now we are going to be putting a survey out there through our Norman Connections Advisory Period in this month, in November, to find out are students connected to, trusted to, on campus? Are they connected to an extracurricular? We're then gonna measure that same, using a similar survey in April, see how that's grown longitudinally over the year, and to understand what our next steps will be to try to increase that number from the get-go for the start of next school year. And our last goal that we're gonna talk about at the high school is engaged and committed parents. As you all know, we have an unbelievably involved community. They're one of our biggest strengths. And leveraging them, utilizing our partnership with them to help with the work that we're doing with their students is incredibly important. So we set up a few goals. One of them was with our PTSA, to raise the number of membership in their annual fund, which we've already done. We set a goal of raising twenty percent in terms of donations. We've already increased by thirty-two percent at the same time from last year to this year, so we're off to a good start there. Instagram, important, social media. It's not something that I'm particularly adept at, but thanks to Mr. Chang and some of the good work that a lot of our folks here on campus have done. We're posting about three times per week now. We're up to almost two thousand followers, so we're really proud of that.
And it gets two hundred likes within, immediately.
Yeah, almost immediately.
So we know people are interacting with it, too.
Parent Square, we're utilizing with fidelity for field trips, secure documents that relate to getting information out to parents. We've had almost four hundred posts since the start of the school year, so that's been good. Calendar, we're trying to make sure that our calendar is linked to our website, to the district calendar, so that you guys know what's going on and that the community also knows what events are coming up. And along with that, we have our Beverly Buzz, which is our weekly newsletter that's published. And finally, our parent info nights. We are going to continue to try to have more of those. We have two planned for the spring, one surrounding AP exams, sort of an AP parent night, and then also, and very importantly, a CASP night. So for our state testing that happens in the spring, one of the questions that our kids always ask us is, why on earth are we taking these tests? It doesn't matter to us. What is the point of this? And so the goal, and we think it will raise achievement for sure, is if we partner with their parents, the community, to, for them to understand why these tests are important, try to get that information and pump up some school spirit surrounding that as we head into testing season this spring. And I believe that is it for the high school. Thank you guys very much, and we'll be happy to answer your questions.
Hi, I'm Dr. Skon, Principal, Beverly Vista Middle School. And shout out to my team. I've got Rich, Jo, and Sarah, amazing admin team. So for Beverly Vista Middle School, when looking at educational excellence, some of our key action steps that we wanted to take this year was deploying our CER performance task. That's the claim, evidence, reasoning. Alex accounts, that's a math intervention for our students. The interim assessment blocks, our social emotional learning, as well as our parent engagement. So those were kind of our key target areas. So for our claim, evidence, reasoning, this is argumentative writing that's across all curriculums. All four frameworks for math, English, history, and science have a component of this in their framework as their standards. So today, we have trained forty-seven teachers on this type of writing. We've completed two performance tasks, a baseline in August and then a science performance task a few weeks ago. And we have done some fun CERs through PE. So we really wanted it to be school-wide, so PE has gotten on board. And we've done two of those. They're fun tasks. So this is a picture of our Doritos commercial where they watched the Super Bowl commercial from a couple of years ago, had to write a CER. And then what we do is we pull some exemplars, we read them on announcements, they get a gift card, some four-core tickets, so they get excited about it as well. We've provided our science teachers with a grading day for the CERs. Then, post the grading day, they had a follow-up day with our consultants so they could talk about the data and next steps. And out of that follow-up day and looking at their analysis, the science department realized that they needed to do another performance task in the spring because they wanted to improve their instruction. And they want to specifically do another science one. So they were given time to create that additional task. And then this week, our history teachers are deploying our second academic performance task through history. And then next week, they'll have their grading day for it. So here's some of our preliminary data on the performance task. We have a school-wide rubric that we're using across the curriculum out of ten points for the rubric. Across the board, our students are great at making a claim. They have an opinion about something, they can state a fact. What we noticed with our baseline data, which this was our, I think you guys might have heard about the murder mystery CER that we wrote, they all did great on the claim, but the evidence and the reasoning, they kind of struggled with. We didn't see a lot of growth with the science one. There was about a month between times, so it's still new for our students. I am excited to see that from sixth grade, where they've never done CERs before, to then the science one, they did grow pretty decently there. We have a little bit of work to do in seventh grade. And again, that's why the science teachers post their grading day, recognize some of their next steps that they need to do instructionally. And our goal by the end of the year is to have an average of seven or better on the CER. So our last performance task will be with our math teachers. And we're hoping, school-wide, that we'll be seven or better on that. In terms of excellence in mathematics, what we have deployed is Alex. It is a research-based educational intervention program for students. It's been around for at least twenty years. It's a company based out of Orange County in Irvine. And students have been given it accounts in sixth and seventh grade. It tests them, it does what's called a knowledge check when they first log in. And it tells the students, it's customized, individualized to the students. Our goal is for students to be on it fifteen minutes a day, four days a week. That's what the research shows is effective for that program. And we are really trying to pair that with our PBIS, so we're incentivizing it. If you are doing the fifteen minutes, four days a week, you get four core tickets, you get prizes. You're gonna get extended lunches, so we're rewarding the students for working hard and putting in the effort towards improving their math scores. Our original plan for our Vision of Excellence only included sixth and seventh grade, but we've gotten some good feedback and the students are really using it. So next week and the week after, we're gonna work on getting our eighth graders enrolled in it. And this is targeted to our students that are at standard, not met, and nearly met. What's really nice about this program, too, is it tells us how many topics they've mastered, they've learned, and how many are remaining. So we can see here for sixth grade, we have quite a few, and also for seventh grade, we have quite a few topics still left to learn. But that makes sense, because we're in the start of the school year. So by the end of the school year, we're hoping that this number is a lot less because they've progressed through their class, but then also through this program as well. Like the high school, we are also deploying the interim assessment blocks. This is new for a lot of our staff. They were not utilizing this resource before. It's free, it's part of the CASP system. And as of today, we have twenty-six out of our thirty-three math classes that have done the interim assessment blocks. They recently did it, so we don't have the data yet. We're waiting for the remaining math classes to finish it. The plan is they will all do it. And then next week, the English department is slotted to do the English interim assessment block. So once we get that data, then the departments will be analyzing it and determining their next steps for it. But again, this is huge progress for our teachers because they haven't done this before. So it's a great next step for the departments. For our social emotional learning, you guys heard about some of this last night during the study session, so I mentioned about the counselors doing their lessons quarterly. It's required now, our admin lessons are monthly. We had our Club Rush, we had anti-bullying campaign in the month of October. Our counselors have done some anti-drug lessons in the classrooms as well, so we're really targeting that component of our campus. We also did do a connectedness survey with our students, and we asked three key questions. Do you feel safe on campus? Do you feel connected to campus? And do you have a trusted adult on campus? And we were really excited to see that for all grade levels, at least ninety-four percent of our students said yes, they feel safe on campus. And we did ask follow-up, open-ended questions of the students. And so the follow-up question was like, what makes you feel safe on campus? And their answers were adorable. A lot of them said that they feel really safe because of the CSEA security guards that we have. They named them particularly, and at least fifty percent of the students said that. So thank you guys for that support on our campus. The kids noticed. And they said, all the adults that we have on campus. So that was great feedback. And then in terms of feeling connected, not as strong of numbers as the feeling safe. But our goal here is to identify why they're not feeling connected or why they don't have a trusted adult. And then by the end of the year, that we have a hundred percent yeses to those questions. We're not there yet, but some of our next steps is to pull any student that answered no and have our counselors and our admin connect them with a club on campus, find out why they said no to some of those. For our kids that said, do you have a trusted adult on campus? This is an easy fix. We're gonna create a spreadsheet and teachers can adopt a kid, a kid that they have in their class, and make that connection with them. So again, by the end of the year, we get a hundred percent of kids saying that they have a trusted adult on campus. Building to that connectedness, we are trying lots of ways to have our kids feel like they are connected. At the middle school level, we really believe that they will engage academically if they feel safe, if they feel connected, and have those experiences with their teachers and with their peers. So we've done things like our beach cleanup day. Our PTA has supported us with our multicultural diversity awareness month. So we had four and five weeks of bake sales after school, parents volunteer. We had like two, three hundred kids show up every afternoon for the different foods and performances in the morning before school. We had our pep rally. It was so awesome. The kids were so into it. Our band and orchestra got to perform for the entire school. And the entire school cheered for them when they were done. And that, like, never happens. It was a whole-school cheer for band. I think Katina Valens and I were both crying after that. We had our student spotlight lunch, which you guys got to meet some of those kiddos. So just different ways that we're trying to connect our kids to our campus. And then lastly, our parent engagement. So one of the things that BVMS is really proud of is our parent universities that we started last year and that we're continuing this year. We've done four parent universities so far this year, and our fifth one is scheduled for next week. And this is where we connect with our parents on topics that they are interested in and that they feel is needed. So we started off the year with the Parents Survival Guide to Middle School. We followed up with social media and the Middle School Dream. We did a special one in October that was a district-wide one on the fentanyl crisis. In October, we also did a mini-tech conference. So we had some of our techs, our tech-tosas come across the district, help do sessions on Aries. They did sessions on how to set up parental controls on our cellphones and our computers to really help support parents. And then our one next week is a unique one because students are invited to it as well. We have an expert coming on to talk to parents about drug use and misuse. And then our counselors and our school resource officers are gonna do a fireside chat with our students about that, so a safe place for students to come and ask questions and get adult answers that are accurate with safe people in a confidential setting. So just... So just some of the things that we're doing to accomplish our goals at BVMS. Thank you, I'm going to pass off to elementary.
Hi, everyone. Craig Bugby, Horace Mann Elementary School.
I'm Sarah Kaver, from Hawthorne Elementary School.
And we're going to talk to you about educational excellence at the elementary level. Thank you to our admin teams, our assistant principals, Chris Regan, Molly Wong, Kevin Painter, Christine Kim. Thank you for all you do.
They really helped, we could not do this with what we're doing. They really helped to put this presentation together and help us with all of the data. Our first, we have two academic goals, we're going to start with academics. The first goal was one year's growth and one year's time.
And student scores will increase in the met and exceed strands by at least three percentage points, hopefully more.
So this is the Hawthorne pathway that we're on, our journey so far. When we first get our students in elementary school, we've got to figure out who they are. So in the first two weeks of school, when we're trying to get to know them, we're doing a lot of assessments, math and language arts, to find out where they are. There's common grade level assessments from TK all the way through fifth grade. And then we meet at week three and have data chats. And that's a moment for us to talk about every single student at each grade level. And we're really taking that time to say, where are they? Where did they come from? What's their whole story? And then we can put together, getting to know them both on paper with numbers, but also a bigger picture of those stories. So that was in August. In September, we talked about effective communication and common language. And then we had a conversation about what is educational excellence? And we defined what makes educational excellence. We asked our staff to come up with a list of things that an educationally excellent school would have, like really concrete things. And then the next time when we saw them in the beginning of October, we said, what does Hawthorne have that makes us educationally excellent? And we let us define them. And then the next time we met, we talked about, we looked at Hattie's Effect Size, saying that certain things actually move our students' one year's growth in one year's time, and other things move it more than a year, and other things don't quite make it to a year. So we looked at that effect size, it has two hundred and fifty-seven items, and looked and correlated the effect size between what we valued and also what we're spending our time doing to see if we're spending our time on the right things. And then we're back in October at the ten-week, right before we went to conferences, and we had another data chat. So we've had two sets of data and two sets of data chats.
Horace Mann, roughly the same schedule. The important thing to know about elementary data chats, this is where we both nerd out. The data chats are the most exciting days of the year, other than Halloween for me. That's a different story. Data chats are where we get together as an entire grade level of teachers at the elementary level. Middle and high school is going to look a little bit different, obviously, because we don't have the grade-level teachers. We get together, grade-level teachers, administrators, counselors, intervention team, anyone that works with the kids. We talk about each individual kid, not just those who need extra support. We also talk about those who are way beyond the extra support and how we're going to help them make that one year's growth in one year's time also. Because we don't want to forget about those kids or any of the others.
So one of the assessment pieces that we gave at the ten-week is our IAVs, which stand for interim assessment blocks. And we're also going to look, when it looks closer, at FIAVs, which are focused interim assessment blocks, which just focus on a few fewer standards, either three to eight standards. And this would be one to three standards in terms of the difference between an IAV and an FIAV. And what you'll also notice with the IAVs is that they have a different scoring system. CASP's scoring system is met, exceeded, standard met, standard exceeded, standard nearly met, or standard not met. And here, when we look at IAVs, we're looking at above, near, or below. They don't have a met standard. And when I talk about this IAV data, it's only third through fifth. Only third through fifth have access to IAVs, and those are also the only grades that are going to take CASP. So we do have assessments for TK through second. We're just only focusing on three through five for this part of the presentation. And we want to look at all of this. When we're having our data chats, we're saying, who are these kids? They're in this thirteen percent. And what are they missing? We can really see the questions on an IAV in a way that we can't in CASP and the way that we can't in some other assessment pieces that Mr. Bugby's going to talk about. We want to look at, where is this yellow middle block of near standard? And what are we doing about the kids, like Mr. Bugby just said, that have already met those standards? How are we changing our tier-one instruction around all of this? All of the slides, Mr. Bugby, you can go forward. You have third, fourth, fourth, fifth, fifth. You'll see that we have very similar scores as we go through. We're there for you. And they're scored in the same way that they are in CASP.
Look at that fourth grade. Okay, moving on from the IAVs. The IAVs, think of it this way, IAVs are a snapshot. STAR Assessment is more of a movie in terms of the children. The IAVs give you one assessment where that kid is on that day in terms of that standard or that grouping of standards. The STAR tests, we have STAR reading and STAR math. Those give us a better picture of where the kids are progressing. Those are administered five times throughout the year. We have those data chats, we look at each individual kid. We have this massive spreadsheet, for those of us who are data nerds, that we can see the progress over time and how the kids are growing throughout the year. Or if they're not growing, that's when we have a serious conversation about what we can do. So you can see here is Hawthorne scores. I'm going to let you kind of take a look. I'm not going to go through each one of them for time's sake. But you can see that virtually everyone is making progress. Some are making massive progress. And then Horace Mann, same thing, you can see the progress over time. Again, we've only administered August and October so far. So we have three more assessments throughout the year to measure growth and progress. All right, college and career day. We are still looking at the career day on January twentieth and looking at, hopefully, combining the two schools and doing one massive career day. We're not sure the logistics, how that's going to work, what grade levels are going to be involved, so details to come. We've been talking about increasing gate class offerings. We have added two new gate classes that are offered in the mornings for those students who qualify. In terms of the gate certification training, which we did talk about at the beginning of the year, we've tweaked that just a bit. The gate certification training is a full twenty-four-unit program. So we're looking at making sure that everyone is trained in differentiated instruction. But we're also, when we talk about gate certification training, we're talking about grades three, four, five. Also, our TK teachers, all of our TK teachers? Actually, you take this one because you're in the class.
Well, I think Ms. Baker should talk about that a little bit. But we have a cohort that's already doing it in early childhood, which is twenty-four units. And so when that's done, we're also looking at a similar type with Johns Hopkins to do a twenty-four-unit cohort of teachers that would be interested in taking gate certifications. Social-emotional learning, we have two goals for social-emotional learning. Our first goal was very similar to the high school and to the middle school, which is a hundred percent of our students will feel like they're connected to at least one adult on their campus. And the second goal is that we're teaching social-emotional learning and touching on all five SEL competencies, competencies, in our every single class. So one of the ways that we hit goal two is that Ms. Fernando at Horace Mann and Mr. Weddle at Hawthorne are two amazing counselors. And they are in every single classroom, every other week. They're teaching lessons. And then they're expanding so that they're not the only time that we're teaching SEL lessons. We also have morning meeting, we also have SEL work that's being incorporated into full lesson plans. And then goal one is with a student survey. Go to the next one. Is it the student survey? There are going to be third, fourth, and fifth grade students that we're going to survey. We're going to ask them, do they like their school? With simple answers, yes, no, sometimes. Do students have someone to eat with at school? All the time, usually, sometimes, never. And this is where our goal connects. Do students have an adult they trust to talk to? Five or more, three to four, one to two, or zero. And then this one's in like a lighter color because we're hoping to get out of this is that they'll have an opportunity to identify hero and husky high-five attributes in themselves as an open-ended piece. And now, oh, sorry.
All right, engaged and committed parents. We're hoping to increase parent engagement. At Horace Mann, we have one hundred and ninety-six members of PTA. We have nine hundred and thirty-two weekly WOOF, our newsletter contacts a week. Sixty-six percent of families interact with Parent Square. We've got a lot of Instagram followers, and the website is continuing to be updated and made evergreen on an ongoing basis.
This is our parent stats. Our annual fund, we measured, last year we had one hundred and seventy-six families, and our goal is to increase by twenty percent. So currently, we have one hundred and sixty-seven, and our goal is to be at two hundred and eleven families by the end of the school year. On Parent Square, we're reaching eight hundred and forty-five parents. We've sent out twelve Hawthorne Happenings, which is the name of our weekly newsletter. We have thirty-nine total posts in Parent Square, and we're reaching fifty-seven percent of our parents that are interacting. On Instagram, we only have eight hundred and eighty-five followers. So if you're not following Hawthorne, now is your opportunity to also follow Hawthorne. But our goal is to get to a thousand. We have forty posts since August fifteenth, although I think we posted today. So maybe we're at forty-one. And our Hawthorne website is evergreen.
And next up, to magnificent, Maggie Mayberry.
Good for you. I'm Maggie Mayberry, the coordinator of elementary education. I'm going to talk about goal number two in our early childhood center. So there's going to be three, four areas that we're going to be talking about that we're going to be considering. And those are our staffing needs, our learning spaces, our instructional materials, and then of course, licensure. Yes, you need a license to have a preschool. You don't really need licenses for schools, but you do for preschools. So our staffing requirements are going to be, now that this is changing through the CDE, in 2025, it's going to be one to ten. So for every ten students in preschool and in TK, they'll need to be a trained certified teacher. And then in kindergarten, the same as where we're at today, one to twenty-one. What's really exciting, and Sarah and Craig began speaking of this, was we actually partnered with Los Virginus USD last year. And many of our TK and kinder teachers tend so far, and Mrs. Kaver, so round of applause to her, who are in the process of getting their TK, you know, their early childhood credential. So we're going to have a pretty good staff trained and ready to go to be in these potential classrooms. You know, with the potential of Hawthorne being open and moving over into El Rodeo, some areas to consider are, these are like the four areas in preschool and early childhood that we need to consider. The size of a playground, bathrooms, got to have smaller potties, way smaller potties for a three-year-old. What our classrooms are going to actually look like, because every classroom needs to have a functioning sink in it. And we also need to contain a functioning cafeteria as we are required to be feeding children on different types of schedules than we currently do in our public schools. And then of course, our instructional materials. And these are actually some of the materials that over at Horace Mann and at Hawthorne that we currently use. So things to think about, what we're going to be doing with phonics, as well as introduction of math, as introduction to writing, how are we going to hold a pencil with handwriting with tears? And then looking through each of the state standards in the preschool area. And then just some of our projections that are going to be occurring. So right now, there's the potential of having four functioning preschool classrooms. And we actually already have two here on our campuses at Hawthorne with our special education rooms, so those will continue as well. And then the growth of having five TK classrooms and then the potential of five kindergarten classrooms total. And then we do need to consider our special ed staff as well for our students that need the services. And then lastly is the licensure. So the city of Beverly Hills does currently hold a licensure for our preschool. So that's something as a district that we would need to consider applying for. One thing learned on the journey of research through this preschool and early childhood education process is you actually have to prepare your school as if it's going to open before you can even start filling out the application for it. So once it's set and ready to go, then we go ahead and start filling out the licensure. And that was something we learned through partnerships that the ed services team has been making. And one school that we went to go visit was Manhattan Beach Unified's preschool because it's something that has been in existence for twenty years. And so this was, you know, kind of a learning process and what the procedures they're putting into place have had. And our next steps is sitting you guys down, having a study session, and then working with the construction team about what this is going to look like and as we transfer over to the potential of this early childhood center. Thank you.
Thank you, Maggie.
Next, we've got Dustin King in face of resources.
Our next goal, obviously, was just the world-class employees. And I know that through our conversation of even just drafting the strategic plan, we had a lot of conversations around following four areas. Was the recruitment process that BHUSD utilized? The hiring process post-recruitment? The training process, was we're able to hire said staff? And then how do we retain said staff? So ultimately, the first and foremost thing that I think is really exciting is just the aggressive recruitment that Human Resources has done. You can see it, all the different platforms that they utilize to be able to post. And we used to, in the past, only utilize EdJoin when we were looking for, to hire positions within BHUSD. And now they're using EdCal to, indeed, to work hiring. And you can also see that they're creating better portfolios or profiles of those positions to really be able to put us coast-to-coast and really hire the best candidates. And some of those, I mean, we've kind of mentioned Jolene Michelle Straffer being top sixteen teachers in the county for Los Angeles. But also, we have a teacher of the year right here that we were able to recruit. You know, Maggie Mayberry was one of those aggressive recruits that Human Resources has been able to, I'm going to use the word infiltrate and pluck, and I see so many of you across the room, that are top of their positions in other districts. And we were able to bring them into BHUSD to help us move our strategic plan and our student success. So outside of just recruitment hiring process is also the training process. And so it's not just about keeping teachers, it's keeping administrators as well. So these are just some of the things. One of the first things that we did this year is we expanded our teacher orientation. In years prior, it used to be a singleton day where you'd come in, you'd learn a couple of educational maybe tools or even just get your class roster, and then you'd be set off to go teach our students. We expanded that to two full days where we really dived into creating their syllabus, contacting parents and students before the start of the school year. To, we have our partnership with National Board still at Stanford University for ongoing professional development for our teachers, which is one of a kind in Southern California. Our California Teacher Reduction Program, we did CPR. I mean, the list goes on and on. And this is only in October, or we're in November, it's just my birthday. So, and even leading into tough conversations, like us needing to be able to have, coming out of post-pandemic, the opportunity to have those difficult conversations around moving student success, both with students, parents, our teachers, and even amongst ourselves. The way that I sat through one of the trainings recently that we're bringing in, thank you for approving that last night, where I was able to figure out who I was as a leader. Do I fight, flight, or freeze in a conflictive conversation? And then what is the outcome? How does that portray to the student, to the parent, or to your colleague? So it's interesting, we're able to bring that on to our leadership team. So one of the things that applaud you guys as a Board of Education real fast is this is our current data right here. As far as that whole goal goes, you'll see that we are second in not only maximum teacher salary for Los Angeles County, also beginning teacher salary, you'll see that we're second out of forty-seven districts. But one of the things that I know that Human Resources has brought in and wants to work with the Board of Education and obviously our union, is just the health and wellness contributions. And so you'll see, we're thirty out of forty-seven. As we know that our goal of excellence is to be able to move and retain the best of the best in the county. So that being said, I'm out.
All right, friends, and now I am up. Okay, I've had the pleasure of talking to you several times about what we're doing with safety. One of the first things I want to do is talk about the school safety team, which really is everybody. If you look up here, these are some highlights. This is kind of my favorite right here, every morning at our schools, we have all-city management cross-guards at every site. We have TCOs typically there every day or close to. We have our CSEA guards and our NASDAQ. We have four separate organizations working together every day, starting in the morning through the afternoon. And a lot of bridge building happens there, teamwork coordination with different groups. So you can see that. You can see a couple of our active shooter drills that we did at Hawthorne and Beverly. Again, especially the one at Hawthorne was an all-city affair. We had city officials, we had BHPD, fire. So, and of course, you can see a couple Hawthorne and Beverly Vista, some of our monthly drills that we're doing. So it's a team effort, it really is. And over here, I love this one, this is a side view of the command center, and you can see our active watch center, which has at least fifty different cameras on all the time typically, all five sites, and usually the perimeter. Although we can go internal, we have different settings for different things. So pretty excited about the team effort. Speaking of the team, I just want to spend a quick moment to talk about the command center team, which is spectacular. I'm happy to work with them. You can see Sean and Anthony in the command center. I'm happy to work with them. You can see Sean and Anthony in the command center, this is where they spend their time. Sean liaises with city partners, he does dispatch, he also is frequently talking to our site leaders and our CSEA guards. So he's keeping an eye on all of us, he's communicating, he's organizing, he's great, he's the perfect guy for the job. We also have Anthony Medina, if you don't know him, he's spectacular, he's a veteran, he is a NASDAQ armed guard supervisor. So what he does is, he also works in the command center, he helps watch the cameras. Maybe more importantly though, he really focuses on the perimeter, focuses on where our NASDAQ guards are, deploys them when necessary. If we have an incident, he can deploy actual squad cars that are working in the city of NASDAQ to the site, oftentimes even before the police are even notified or even need to go there. So it's pretty great. So he's organizing our armed presence, and he actually sometimes works with city partners as well. By city partners, I mean NASDAQ guards who work within the city and aren't deployed specifically at school. And we have Ryan Damavanti, he's the brains behind the tech, he's the one that keeps all the things working, and we rely on him a lot to keep all of these shiny toys in the back functioning. So that's our command center team, they're great, but don't want to forget all the folks who are boots on the ground, CSEA guards, NASDAQ, crossing guards, and our TCOs, and our SROs. So great security team that I get to work with every day. We have lots of goals right now, but the ones I want to focus on are the ones attached to the strategic plan, and I'm already going to really touch on them. We have our monthly emergency drills, which we have an AP from every site working with me, we reflect afterward, we reflect on various items, including some of our emergency communication, which I'll get to in a minute, that's some of our data. We have emergency supplies, that is one of our goals as well, and the goal is to get to one hundred percent by November. We are going to barely eke it in, we've already gotten the support we needed from the board and the district, we are literally waiting on some supply stuff. They're coming in, last I heard, we will be fully stocked.
I saw much in the tunnel.
That's right.
I was like, I don't know.
Yep, yep, and we're going to get to that in a minute. So the emergency supplies are happening, they're here, and we will be, by Thanksgiving break, we should have all classrooms set up as well. Command center, this is really exciting stuff, I'm not going to get into it today, but one tiny bit of data is, we are one camera away from a hundred percent functionality and five hundred-plus cameras right now, and we expect this is probably going to go up today to a hundred percent. So we're super excited about that. And comprehensive school safety plan, we inherited a little bit older district plan. The sites have been great every single year, they're doing their stuff. The district plan was a little old, we revamped the whole thing, went over it with fire, with PD, and with some of our city partners. So that's really exciting, it's been looked at, it's been thumbs up, and now it's been kind of cloned to the sites where they're customizing it by site, and they're way ahead of schedule, doing great, just working on goals going forward. So these are happening, we're right on schedule, a couple of other details in terms of data. So we have our tight communication, emergency communication, one-way communication is very effective, and it's not that hard, right? It just pumps out to the user and warns them and gives them some information. The more challenging part is the two-way communication. We send out, hey, there is a, we're doing a lockdown drill right now. We need to know if you're okay. The staff member responds back. That can be a little more challenging. So our first, but when they respond back, we get a blue if they're safe, and we get a red if they're not. So you presume if there was an active event, there was a danger, you get a cluster of red. You could actually see on the map where they are. That's why this two-way communication is so great. When we first tried it out in September, we got about fifty percent, you know, we, it didn't work perfectly, which was expected. Hawthorne had actually had a training, you can see from one training, they were far ahead of the other three who hadn't had one yet. We did a second live drill, trying to do two-way communication, you can see these jumped up. So we're all the way up to seventies, Hawthorne all the way up to eighty, and we will keep working on it, getting better. So we're really excited about this two-way communication, which is much more difficult, we're excited about it, and we will continue, we have an event in fact tomorrow, BBMS, and we're going to try it again, we're going to keep working on it, see how high we can get this. We're pretty excited about the two-way communication, which is challenging in an actual incident, even if it's a drill. So great job by the sites. Somebody mentioned our emergency bins, we've gone through every single emergency bin, every single site, we've got rid of perishables, we've reorganized, we've re-inventoried, made sure that one bin as much as possible is called a stay bin, it's for a seventy-two hour or less stay. We only would open this up if we're like, in a situation where kids are going to be here a long time, they might even be here overnight. So these are one bin that we don't open instantly in emergency, the other one opens up right away, their search and rescue, their medical supplies, their incident command. So different bins organized in a way, so it's as simple as possible for the sites to know which bin to go to, who goes where. So that's all been reorganized, including these super cool recycling bins. Basically imagine two pods of first graders, like, two first grade classes sitting together, two teachers, you just bring that right over to where the kids are located, they don't have to leave their spot, they stay there. Everything they need for seventy-two hours is in there. So pretty cool, very mobile, very easy to move. So that's an innovation that we just came up with this year, we're, I think everybody's universally excited about it. Super easy, super intuitive, and we've got our buckets for long-term stays. We also have the classroom supplies, so those are in. As you can see, these are almost in, any minute now, I just checked, they said before Thanksgiving break, every single class is going to have a brand-new emergency supply backpack. They have them now, they're perishing this year, so it's perfect timing, we resupply, it's on a five-year cycle. And then classrooms all need to have a lockdown kit, it's got a privacy tarp bucket, basically cat litter, whatever, and some bags, you know. Hopefully we never need it, but every class should have it, they are coming any second now. And last but not least, I think the most important thing, you can't really quantify this exactly, but building these bridges between all of these partners that we have in the city. We've had many events now that include fire department, police department, and various aspects of Beverly Hills city leadership at the same time. So not just building individual bridges, but building bridges altogether, creating a network that can respond to emergencies quickly and effectively, and having those relationships already. This has been really exciting, it's only been a few months, but I think this is really, really coming together in a great way. So that's what we've been doing, I'm really excited about it, and I'm going to hand it now over to Sandy Sosin.
Hi, I'm Sandy Sosin, Director of IT, but President Paul's upgraded me last night, so I'm going to hold you too bad. I'm just superintendent now. So you guys are presented with the goals. So overall, we're looking to support our end users, making sure that we have a roadmap, and we're being fiscally responsible within the IT department. And then within the major goal, we broke that down into five, so implementing those processes, making sure that we're supporting learning at home and at school, reflect on what we're doing, and making sure that we're up to date with everything that's going on, look at our framework, make sure that we're following current cyber IT security protocols, and then just being fiscally responsible as we move forward with our one-to-one devices for our students. So for this year in the strategic plan, what we did is we developed out the projects that we're going to be doing and focusing on. So one was with the Horace Mann Theater upgrades. So right now, we're on target with everything. We've already been posting for our advertisement, done job walks with them. And then moving into Beverly Vista as the next one that we're going to be working on upgrading their theaters as well. We're kind of on hold with that because of expenses, and one of the goals that we had was being fiscally responsible, so we're going to take a step back from that and make sure that we're working with the correct team to have that upgrade done correctly. Our IT security and backup, so we're currently working with Vector USA to make sure that we're working on updating procedures and policies. We're in phase one of our documents, so just making sure that everything is tight in case of an emergency, whether it's, you know, a disaster, or if it's somebody infiltrating into our system. So I'll be working with Mark and his security team to make sure that everything is aligned between both of our departments as well. And then also, once we get those phase one and phase two documents done, is making sure that our end users also understand their responsibility and that they're trained in using, they're, or understanding the cybersecurity part of it as well, because we do have a lot of networks that we support and work with, making sure that we are backed up correctly. Sometimes our end users could fall into a phishing scam, and then that can infiltrate into our system as well. Also working on data recovery and making sure everything is backed up as well. We're currently working with UDT and having them back up our systems as well to make sure that we can recover correctly. And then just looking at our infrastructure, updating any of our access points and all of our switches as well. So this is the project timeline, so in the benchmark one, which we're talking about, November, you can see the targets that we did hit. Like I said, we are on hold with BV because of the consultancy, we're going to find a new one to work with, and then with our switches and AP replacements, we're on hold with that right now because of delivery issues that we're having. And then we have planned out how to move forward with our projects through March and June, so we can make sure that we work through this throughout the rest of this year as well. And then also working with the various sites to make sure that they are getting what they need from the department. So Dr. Skon brought up that students need to understand how to work with their one-on-one devices when they get broken, so we had a common communication go out to the sites. We're also working on e-wasting with all of the techs on their sites, and then also roadmapping for one-to-one devices for the next coming four years. And that's it, and I'll hand it off to Phil.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Will Karat, Director of Construction, as you all know already, I hope. So I'm going to be reviewing our construction services plan, our strategic plan. Just really quick, our strategic plan was to construct and modernize historical school sites in a manner that achieves the district's mission and vision statements, and provide excellent school buildings that are conducive to student achievement, safety, and success. So this is our team, so along with myself, I have Shirley in my office up here, right behind us, over here actually. And then we also have our construction management team, which consists of Fonder Solari Group and all of their various project managers, project engineers, and their administrative staff. So our goals to move towards our strategic plan are to update the facility's master plan, assist, assess the facility's needs and categorize it by deferred maintenance or construction projects, provide updated construction schedules and budgets, increase communication with the district. And I know when I first came here, that was one of our main goals, is to increase the communication between our project teams, our office, of course, our assistant superintendent, and then the board as well. And then also ensure that the projects are monitored closely, and we are working towards that. Some of the action items that we come up with to achieve those goals are to provide an update on the progress made with both bond funds. So for instance, on October twenty-fifth, we had a study session, we reviewed our progress and presented that to the board. We've been posting updates on our construction website, and we also updated our citizens bond oversight committee to perform tours of both Elrodeo and the high school projects. We also are identifying the status of each project along with our CM team, and they've reviewed the budgets and the schedules for each of those major projects. We provide an update also on October twenty-fifth, and just a few notes here, the Elrodeo project, the scheduled substantial completion date is the end of next year, and then at the end of the following year, we plan on being substantially complete with the high school B-three, B-four projects. One of our other action items is to hold weekly meetings, so we are currently holding a meeting every Friday with myself and the assistant superintendent Raphael, and our CM team, Fonder Solari. And we're also increasing our presence at the sites, mostly with our CM team. They have at least two personnel on each construction site, that's a project manager and a project engineer. And then they also have oversight by their bond manager and also administrative staff that help the project management team. We've also engaged with our auditors, so they, our auditors have provided recommendations based on their last report, and we've been following those recommendations. We're also anticipating another report to come out in the beginning of next year, where we'll have recommendations and be able to follow up on those by March of next year and take those recommendations into account. We've also, with the help of our CM team, we negotiated contracts and agreements. You've probably seen a few of those already in our board agendas, they were able to help us save some money on changes that have come up on each project. For instance, we had Beverly Vista Streetwork yesterday, we were able to save some money on that project. We've also, we're able to collect some savings on the retaining wall project as well. And then, and lastly, provide informative monthly updates, and we are doing that. With the help of Fonder Solari, we're putting together a monthly report, both project, by project and overall bond update as well. And we post those on the board agenda and our website. So this is just a snapshot of our strategic plan and what we've done in November, and what we plan to do coming up in March. It's all the, mostly the same goals, and we'll continue to keep those goals going in March, but we will provide an update on our needs assessment in March, and then hopefully we'll have a new audit where we can present the findings of that audit in March and, and move on those recommendations. And I think now we pass it on to Ken.
Thank you. Hello, everybody. My name is Ken Haas, I'm your Executive Director of Facilities, and I'm here to give you an update on our strategic plan as it relates to the facilities department. The facility department's commitment to excellence revolves around six main areas. Our five-year deferred maintenance plan, our request system, site input and communication, professional development, facility inspection processes, and regular custodial inspections. The following slides will illustrate steps that the facilities department has taken in order to meet the objective of keeping our schools safe, compliant, and in excellent condition. We have set goals in order to meet our objectives, we are effectively executing our five-year deferred maintenance plan. We have defined numerous projects to be managed by Will's Construction Services Department, such as the Beverly Vista Bulldog Gate Center, the Horace Mann Shade Structure Project, and other large projects that were previously in my department. We're working towards twenty-four-hour response times for our work order system, and our fit report findings are converted into work orders to be completely, completed safely and quickly. We've also implemented regular inspection programs for custodial services and facilities. Action items have been created to help us focus on the necessary activities required to meet our goals. This includes assessments of response times, surveys, professional development, inspections, and supply chain continuity. The following slides will illustrate the metric assessment tools we have in place in order to ensure our action items assist us in reaching our goals of excellence. The next few slides will give us a glimpse into our five-year deferred maintenance plan and our project list. It's also a living document that is designed to be flexible so that we can keep up with the changing and competing demands for our resources. This slide here gives us a snapshot of where we are with our deferred maintenance plan. I'll just talk about the color coding a little bit, the green are projects that are completed, the white areas are projects that are scheduled and are on target, and the pastel blue items are projects that are in progress and on time. There, the gray area represents a few projects that are ahead of schedule. I'll just use an example of a high school, if we look at the high school out of a total of thirty-two, seventeen out of thirty-two projects that are listed on our private deferred maintenance plan for the high school are completed on time and on budget. Three of the thirty-two projects are in progress and on time, and twelve of the thirty-two projects are on target to start on time and be within our budgets. If we look at the slides in the center, so each of the four smaller charts represent each individual school and where we are with those projects, and the center is an average of those four to show where we are within our plan. This next slide is actually just another look at the same thing, and what it illustrates is our total amount of projects, the projects that are completed, the ones that are on target, in process, and then, yeah, the last two columns are for ahead of schedule and behind schedule. We actually have no projects that are listed out of our ninety-two projects that are behind schedule or over budget at this time. This next slide is just a snapshot of the condensed window of time that we have to operate, to do our deferred main, deferred maintenance projects, so it just shows that how we really can't work during the school year when we're occupied, and we can do certain things, but certainly not major projects where you're disrupting the program. The areas in green represent the, the window of time that we have, which is about seven and a half to eight weeks during the year. It's just a kind of snapshot, it takes a lot of collaboration and effort between all the different departments, and site administration, and JPA, and athletics, in order to be able to get our projects scheduled and still, you know, continue with school programs. Our work order system, it is difficult to compare completion times of work orders due to the wide array of issues we deal with. Some cases are as simple as turning a screw, where others are plumbing calls that turn into major invasive and disruptive projects. Just a snapshot of the last couple of years, you can see the work orders that were completed by the department. This does not include projects or items that our staff finds out on the sites and deals with while they're out there. This is just simply work orders that were submitted by the sites to us and that were completed. So you can see in twenty-twenty, we did number six twenty-nine, and then the following year- So you can see in 2020, we did number six twenty-nine, and then the following year, fifteen fifty, and to date this year, we've completed fifteen hundred and twenty-two work orders. If we look at just a snapshot of the last several months, from August through December, or November, October 31st, we've completed five hundred and seventy-seven cases. Principal survey. I'll be collaborating with the principals and the assistant principals with the facility's responsibilities to create a survey that can be easily implemented and used as an effective metric assessment tool. The survey will be based on responsiveness, effectiveness, communication, customer service, areas of recognition, and areas in need of improvement. I plan on using something like a Survey Monkey service, so we don't have to reinvent the wheel. It's a simple process, it's free or inexpensive depending on how we use it, but we'll all work with the principals to decide the best method for that, and the plan is to have that implemented and rolled out by January of 23. Professional development. Our training schedule includes, but is not limited to, personal protective equipment, ladder safety, defensive driving, slip, trip, fall hazards, ergonomics, hazardous communication, fire extinguisher and fire prevention, heat injury illness prevention, and back injury There's been substantial improvement in the condition of our sites in the last three years. We have gone from reports, fit reports, which are facility inspection tool reports, that in our first year that we conducted the report, we had generated nearly seven hundred work orders associated with that 2020 report, and this last year in '22 generated less than three hundred items. Our monthly inspections that we've begun on facilities will reduce the annual fit findings, and that will be capturing more items on a monthly basis than on an annual evaluation. We'll be collaborating with site administration to help us reach exemplary ratings by supporting the removal of clutter and eliminating high storage and a few other fit findings that the site admin can help us with. I just want to touch real quickly on the exemplary rating. Our goal is to reach excellence, so our fit reports are graded on either poor, fair, good, or exemplary. In order to reach that exemplary level, you have to be in the ninety-nine to one-hundred percent top. So if you look at the evaluation level, it's a big challenge, it's going to take the whole village to make it happen. We're in the upper nineties, one of our sites is in the ninety-eight percentile right now, the rest are in the ninety-six, ninety-four range, so we have some room for improvement, and we're going to get there and keep at it. Weekly inspections. We recently implemented a new custodial and facility inspection program. Weekly custodial inspections are conducted using an inspection form that grades the areas of custodians responsible for keeping clean. Not all the sites have received this yet, this has just been rolled out in the last couple of weeks, and we're two sites into it, it's a bit of an involved process, but now that we have the system in place, it'll be much quicker and easier to implement and keep up with. We actually just go to use our iPad, and we're able to document inspection results, add pictures to the reports, and then save to employee files for retrieval and review. We then review the inspection reports with each employee, give them direct feedback on their efforts by highlighting areas of excellence and areas that need improvement. Inspection results will be compared month to month to ensure improvement has been made. And finally, professional development. We've conducted various professional development training using different resources. We've used safety and best practices courses presented by Alive, Keenan, and Associates Professional Trainer. We bring in our waxy specialists for both chemical and tool training, and we do that on a monthly basis as well. Finally, our fit inspection tool. We are, sorry, got a little mixed up there on the slides there, sorry about that. We already touched on the weekly inspections and what we're doing. So we fill out our inspections, Scott then reviews them with the employees, and then we, month to month, we'll review it with them, and we'll have the tools we need to make sure that our custodial services are up to par. That concludes my presentation. Would you like to introduce Ken?
Hi.
Hi.
Buddy, okay? All right. I'll be real quick and brief. You've all seen my, I have planned for, strategic plan for the school district athletically, we talked about it a few times ago, so what we're trying to do. Overall, trying to increase the connectivity of our students at each individual school through athletics. It's a big part of the program. Two largest programs on each campus at BV and the high school are athletic program. They encompass more kids, and we do a lot for them. So our strategic plan basically is to get our kids connected to school and provide more opportunities for them to participate in an educationally-based athletic program. So, quick progress report, real quick. BHHS, we held a meeting a couple of weeks ago, we talked about trying to add programs to girls' golf team. I've always wanted to have, when we were here, we had to sign up, and we had five girls, actually six girls, that signed up and wanted to play girls' golf. So next year in the fall, we'll be able to have a girls' golf team, moving that forward. So I'm pretty excited about that, that's pretty huge. We have, and Boys Coach is going to take on that, and so we're very, really excited about that. At the middle school now, I'm working with the FIA, they're talking about adding girls' tennis. I'd like to have a girls' tennis program to be involved with that, with our FIA program, again, providing more opportunities. Right now, Athletic Excellence, our girls' tennis team is in the CIF quarterfinals down on the courts against Valencia, so hopefully they're doing very well. So we're looking to do that at the middle school. And we have a picture here, I move my thing forward. Our new fitness room, so they're providing our facilities, and thank you to the BH, excuse me, the BVMS PTA for funding that, for the staff, Dr. Skon at BV for giving us the facility use, and so we've got a great room for our kids to have a weight room or a strength training room that they haven't had, one of only, I don't know of any other middle school around in this area that even has anything like that. So we're upgrading our facilities to include those kids. So we're looking for a lot of things there as well. So very excited about what's going on at BV. And then Hawthorne and Horace Mann. FIA is starting now to filter down into the grammar schools. They have a fifth grade program, and I need to talk with, working with Craig and Sarah to see if that's something we want to incorporate in terms of an educationally-based program, athletic program at those schools, to get those kids involved. And we work kind of top-down, as we've gone from the high school down to the middle school and then down to the grammar schools, and I think something we would like to be able to do next fall is start with the football and the volleyball, move into basketball and soccer at that level. So again, more kids in our district, playing for their kids, excuse me, playing for their schools, and an educationally-based athletic program. Couple of other little things real quick that we are doing. Professional development for our coaches. I'm real big on the fact that we've got, brought in a lot of great young coaches, but we professionally develop our teachers, we're also going to professionally develop our coaches. We've hired the Positive Coaching Alliance, which provides a lot of professional development, training for our young coaches in terms of how to run a program, dealing with parents, all the things besides just coaching the sport. So we're moving forward in terms of that. That's just a quick nutshell of what we're trying to do. We're real excited about moving forward, we've got facility things. Thank you, Board, for all that, working forward in the upgrade of our facilities, those basketball courts are beautiful outside that we've done, and so we've got a lot of things going on. So, okay, that's going to be quick, and thanks. See you, bye.
And good afternoon. Thank you all again for this opportunity to present today in regards to the Business Services and Fiscal Services Strategic Plan update. So you've all seen our objective, and really, our main focus is to provide a sound budget and ensure that financial services are being provided to our school district, and it's really important that it's done in this cycle. And you've seen this before, it's a consistent cycle of financial activity, and we're making sure that, you know, in that cycle, everything's happening correctly. So as we move on, just so, you know, our team members, business services itself is comprised of, you know, several departments with Will, Ken, who've all presented today, Sandy as well, and we also have Gilda, who's our Director of Purchasing, Heather O'Mayo, our Director of Food Services, and Angelie, who's our Director of Fiscal Services. But today we'll focus on the fiscal side, and you can see our fiscal services team, which I'm very appreciative of, they're an amazing team, great staff, they're doing the best they can, and I think it's reflected in what we're seeing. So as you know, our main goals were really to maintain a fiscally sound budget, that's really an important thing for the school district and I'm sure for the board as well. And so we're working towards that, and we've had quite a bunch of different goals there. We also have some action items, you've seen those action items in the past as well, and so we'll go and give a little update on where we are. So in regards to financial reporting, we did report our forty-five day budget revision on time, and we are projected to report the first interim at the December sixth board meeting. So we are on par to report on time for first interim. And our audit as well, we're looking at that being reported in the month of January, I've been in constant communication with our auditors to make sure that that audit is going smoothly as well. Our other goal was, or action, sorry, was in regards to quarterly site surveys, we've developed those, and we're going to be sending those surveys out to our sites. We've had some meetings with our sites, we've changed some things around, some processes, and I think that we'll be receiving some positive feedback, but nevertheless, we want to make sure we send that out and see how that's being received. We have established ongoing meeting with principals, we meet at least once a month with our principals, and we also are meeting after every single major financial reporting period. So after the first interim, we're going to make sure to meet with our principals, make sure, review the budget again, because as you know, at every interim period, there's adjustments to the budget, and we want to make sure that it's clearly communicated to everybody. In regards to the Business Services Procedure Manual, we're in the process of updating that, we should have a draft a little earlier than expected, we should have that probably somewhere in early January, so want to make sure we give you an update on that. The audit report, we have been turning in all necessary documents for our audit, I've been speaking a lot with our auditors recently and making sure that that's all in place, in fact, I have a meeting with them tomorrow just to do another recap of our audit, and they do anticipate to have the 21-22 audit ready in January of 2023. So that's on par with what we've seen in the past. We will include any adjustments for that audit or anything that comes back as an audit adjustment at second interim. I prefer to do that first interim, but we're going to be doing that at second interim because of just the timing of the audit itself. We have worked towards establishing industry-standard procedures, so for instance, we developed a contract tracker, and that's really going to be helpful for the district, district-wide, and we're also working with LECO to implement the new HCM, our payroll system, or Human Capital Management System. It's replacing the HRS or the Human Resource System that we had in the past, that's going to be a lot of work, it is a lot of work, and we're excited about it, and hopefully we'll be live in late 2023. Some exciting things about that is just we'll be able to see payroll a lot better, employees will be able to go in and actually look at their pay stub online, which is a huge, huge thing, and we're really excited about that implementation, but it is a lot of work, and we're working with LECO for that, so we're establishing those procedures. And as you can see, you've seen these metrics in the past, we're on par with what we asked or presented for November, and we are looking good for March and June. We feel that these will consistently be followed, we're not behind on any of these, so we're happy about that. And moving on to, so, and that's about it for me. So I turn it over. So thank you.
I'm back. I'm a different person this time. Hi, guys. We are nearing the end. At the end of our strategic plan, one of the things that we wanted to also tackle was just kind of the recognition portion, right? To award not only all the hard work that we're doing internally in BHSC, but also to be able to prove to everyone in our community, but outside of our community, all the great things that we're doing too. So the first, the next three slides that you're going to see are really just maps. So initially in the strategic plan, you'll see that we have attached exactly what we could apply for from a school-based level. These maps will indicate what is the kind of timeline. So right now, we're actually, when you look at the elementary, we've just indicated that we're in the data collection piece, and that we're focusing on the educational gaps, right? So we have to move those gaps, move, oh, sorry, move that data to be able to then become recognized. So in the elementary arena, we talked about that you can't actually apply for the blue ribbon, you're identified based on the data that you're able to move. So they're already in that process of doing that work, and so we hope that we're able to move that enough, that needle enough, to be able to be recognized by the California Department of Education. For the middle school, though, you'll see that the roadmap does change slightly in the sense that on Dr. Skon and BVMS's strategic plan, there is a rubric that is attached, because you do, for the middle school portion, it's called Schools to Watch, you do have to apply for that. But again, the process is very similar in the sense that there's a data collection piece, identifying the educational gaps. Once we're able to identify and be able to move that data, we then do have to submit an application for that process, and that's something that we are monitoring internally. And then last but not least, we mentioned this a little bit yesterday in a study session, but also for the high school, again, just making sure everyone's aware of where are these timelines. It's a data collection piece, identifying increases in APs, but I want to applaud the high school for, we already showed you some data earlier. The CAS scores in SAT, obviously, then the post-secondary piece, which we're working with our 12th graders today on, which then we can become recognized in U.S. News and World Report and NISH. So those are those two areas. I just wanted to visually be able to see where that is at. But, so school, staff, and students is part of this goal, right? So staff itself, we alluded to a little bit earlier, is, you know, making sure that we are putting our teachers out there, identifying and awarding the teachers that are, you know, those top-tier teachers, and Michelle Stratford was one I mentioned earlier. We talked about ACTA a little bit earlier as well, is the Association of California School Administrators, they have applications open currently right now, and one of the things that we've done administratively is we've looked at the application to identify students in our community that we can nominate for certain awards for that organization, but also our colleagues, so nominating some of our administrators outside of our teachers as well for the hard work that they're putting in. But then you'll also see on this last picture was, one of the things under Dr. Bruggi's, you know, vision was to be able to award more of our staff internally. It's not just about, it used to be just about the five App Award winners, but now being able to award classified to OTBS, to CICA, everybody that is impacting our student success across the district. Last but not least, students, right? That's why we're all here, this is the main goal, is we are consistently working, all of us in this room, to increase participation in all of these really great competitive opportunities for students to be recognized. From Skills USA, hi, Mr. Stube, back there, you know, to our science fair, which is coming up next Wednesday, we want to give our students that opportunity in all of the areas that they're interested in, the opportunity to get recognized for those areas. So we're consistently working as an administrative team to be able to find them with the student spotlights at the Board of Education, to just within our own schools of, you know, Dr. Skon, sorry, she's right in my eyeline, of, you know, at the semester, identifying those that are on the principal's honor roll, calling them down, giving them a treat, taking a photo, sending that out to the community to be able to honor the academic excellence that those kids have achieved. Athletics, again, our tennis team's right out there playing.
One fifteen to three, on to the semifinals.
Yes. Just talking my presentation, see? Timing's perfect. But what can you guys do? So this is the one asset I'm going to have to with you guys, is, the great part is we get to go to the California School Board Association Conference in December, and there is an informational session on Golden Bell's award. And so there's some programs here that I would love to work with you guys on being able to highlight, like our Norman Aid Center, our Career Technical Education Program. So there's certain facets within the Golden Bell for the California School Board Association that we can nominate our programs for, for consideration to win for the following school year. That being said, we are done, and so I'd like to hand it over to the faculty.
And just for time's sake, let me just jump into questions and thank you. I know it's hard to sit through a long presentation if you have questions, so I do apologize for that, but thank you for doing that. We're happy to answer any questions that you have.
I'm going to let Gage start because he's...
Yeah, I got to leave in ten minutes, I have a hard stop. So first, I just want to start by saying, thank you, thank you, thank you for all of the, you know, work you guys have done, the materials that you guys have put together. I know this is a lot of work, and it's really important that we're doing this and going through this exercise, so we all have visibility, this is an expensive meeting with a lot of high-power executives in the room together, right? But it's really important that we get together and we all have kind of transparency, seeing what's working and not working. So in an effort, though, for constant improvement, I want to give a little bit of feedback, you know, across the board based on what I saw, and I got to take some responsibility for this, because one thing I think that we can really benefit from in each one of these plans, and I did see bits and pieces of this in some of them, is starting with like a clear scorecard almost, like, here's the goal, here's where we're supposed to be, red, yellow, green, working or not working. So like, really quickly, we have all of our attention, like, here's where we need to all focus our... focus our attention, like, we got this, like, we're handling this part. Here's the part that, okay, not so sure, we're making some progress. Like, I remember in the, in, I think it was the high school presentation, we were comparing scores from year-end last year to like where we are right now, like, okay, like, could be on track, could not, like, not sure, but, you know, it's all good. To, okay, this is red, like, I think it was, I think it was in the Hawthorne versus Horace Mann, fourth grade, one class is here, one class is there, like, what's, like, what's going on, right? Because that'll help focus our attention too. Like, our job, we just created our board goals, right? Do you all have the resources you guys need to be successful with what you guys are doing? Like, is there something that we could be doing differently to support? Do we need to adjust, you know, resources? Do we need to, you know, if there's an ask, like, I just heard, you know, Dustin say it then, I think that was the first ask I heard, like, board, here's what we need, you know? That's incredibly helpful, so we can focus our attention where, you know, we need to to support all of you. So I just, I'm grateful, this is a muscle that takes time to develop. I just appreciate that we're here and we're doing the check-in. If there's going to be as much material, like, as many words and stuff that, like, we've got to digest, maybe better to send it to us in advance, so we can skim through some of it and come up with more questions, but I'm just thrilled we're doing it and we're going through this exercise, and I just want to make sure that we're as focused as we can be coming out of these, you know, meetings. So even just, and I think, you know, Will did it, Tim did it, you know, just having like the quick snapshot of, here's gold, here's where we're supposed to be right now, boom, this is working, this is not working, and so we can just quickly digest that, and then it'll just kind of focus all of our attention. I hope that makes sense. But really, thank you guys very much. This was, this was really helpful. I don't know, I have a lot of specific questions, but I'm going to have to leave, so I'll just, I'll pass it to my board members. I, it's just a bit too much to get through in the next four minutes for me, so.
And you can send me questions. I'll send out like a quick doc and then share that with the team and then present that back to the whole board.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Would anyone else like to go next?
Sure.
Go ahead.
First of all, I thought it was, I really enjoyed that. I thought it was very comprehensive. I think the graphics are amazing, very helpful. I really got a snapshot of the entire school. And also, when we're speaking towards educational excellence, I really see that that is sort of the vantage point that everyone is headed towards, and I think that that is an amazing vantage point that everyone is working towards. And I also like that when you were talking about, when the high school was presenting as well as the middle school, we heard about reliable benchmarks in terms of evidence-based data in terms of testing, because we can't have educational excellence, obviously, if we don't have baseline and then goals toward improvement throughout the year. And I just had a quick, kind of granular question. We know that the CAS, which a lot of schools, I guess most public schools in California use at the end of the year, is a great system in the sense that it's normed on nationwide data, right? So we know, although I don't know if they've done a norm since the pandemic, which they should, because in my opinion, the standards have changed, they've kind of, they're a little delayed, but anyway, since you, we have the CAS that we use, and we know that that helps us understand where, you know, what average is. So like, the sixth grade, the sixth grader, what is average for springtime for a sixth grader? But with the interim assessment blocks, I just want to know, since you guys are using that, you know, before you get to the CAS, how is that normed? Is that, is that just with, is it intra-population, like, within the students themselves, so like, they say, you know, they aggregate who is the, you know, the highest scoring, or is it actually also based on nationwide data?
So I'm going to, the CAS itself is actually only utilized in thirteen states. So it's actually not a nationwide assessment. It's a partnership with the California Department of Education. So coming from Illinois, we actually use the ACT suite, so like, we would utilize the ACT nine as a placement tool into high school, and we would give it to our eighth graders. We utilize S five, eight, and eleven in Illinois versus three through eight plus eleven here, plus science. So it's thirteen states, like Ohio utilizes it, Pennsylvania, so it's normed within those, and you're correct, that it hasn't been re-normed with the fifty percent mark during COVID and post-COVID. But the interim assessment blocks are actually created off content, so it's actually, you're testing for skills that are standards that will be represented on the actual CASP exam at the end.
So in other words, it's criterion-based. So in other words, you either know the skill or you don't, but you're not, you're not looked at in terms of the bell curve of what an average score is, all that. So it's within, do you know the skill or not?
Correct. That's where at the assessment, the summative assessment, there's a wide range between like, twenty-one hundreds, they'll say like twenty-five hundred, and students are scored within that kind of range. Here, there's only three marks. It's either you met it, you understand the standard in which we're trying to get you, you are near to that, say like if there's ten questions, you might have scored eight out of the ten, and then not nearly met, you're probably in the two, three range, meaning like you got two to three or a zero kind of incorrect.
Right. So presumably, you're assuming that to reach the fiftieth percentile performance level or higher, then you would know those, those skill sets. So that makes sense to me. And then totally unrelated, or actually two more little things that I might say. When we're talking about the screening of some of the freshmen with mental health issues, it was mentioned that of approximately three hundred freshmen, thirty-three or so were found to need more intensive counseling support. So I'm just wondering, what is the follow-up and monitoring of, say, that roughly ten percent of kids, you know, that could, you know, sensibly get worse or, you know, in a further crisis? What is the process of that?
So the Science and Suicide Program actually, it's a two-day, kind of, the counselors go in, do a presentation, there's a video attached to it, and then on the second day, they're able to follow up with kind of like a Q and A, and then they provide them with a survey. And that survey, there's actually two questions that if a student identifies immediately, like, I need an trusted adult, or I need help immediate, those kids are immediately called that day, meaning that day right away, and they're triaged, meaning going directly into either support with the school counselor, school psychologist, ally Norman Franks in the Norman Center, or with an MFT, because that was, MFT was on staff during that day, or even assistant principal and principal, that they're immediately called, you know, whether they are, you know, bringing in an outside person to be able to support that. If then, they, if they answered yes to one of those two questions, immediate support that day. If it was out of the six questions, if they answered yes to only four of that, there's a tiered system to identify, so then it may be a follow-up the next day, and it was really just around the school counselor, like, they were just concerned about the conductiveness for that kid, or there might be issues for that student that they weren't aware of. And so there's two piles really created through the program, it's like immediate need, parents are on the phone, administration's involved, and then there's the, we need to follow up with the student, make sure that we have tabs on this kid, and how many times are we going to follow up, whether that be, again, not always just through the Norman Aid Center, but through our school counselors and other trusted adults in the school. It's really exciting.
Thank you. One last thing is just the diversity, equity, inclusion piece. We didn't hear much about that, but, I mean, it is, it does factor into educational excellence in some ways, and I just, I don't know if anyone wants to share on, I mean, you guys have done some amazing things with the multicultural days and things like that, and I know there's parent outreach for different things, but I just was wondering who you guys were going to.
So the last feedback that we received was to kind of embed that through the work that we're doing, and so that's, as this begins to evolve, that's where we need to make sure that we're adding.
Thank you. Wonderful job, and I really enjoyed it.
Michelle Arnell, did you want to go next?
Yeah, sure. Okay, well, without going into a lot of whatever my colleagues have already said, it was an amazing presentation and very, very comprehensive, and kudos to them for making all the statements that I would have made also. I was more, I don't know how to put this without being, I would, I was expecting in the academic, a more precise knowledge of how we're being, how we've identified kids and how they're actually doing. I mean, I know this is an ongoing thing. I was expecting to see an actual progress, period, a number of progress, and I didn't feel like I got that. I know what we're all doing, and I understand that, but I just felt that most of the presentation, I was completely right on with what everything is doing and what they're going and where they are and so on, and I didn't feel that confidence just yet in the, and that's the probably, that's the hardest area that we have to evaluate at this point, and I was hoping to see more of the results of that they're doing so far based on where they were. And I don't know if I'm making myself clear on that.
No, a hundred.
Yeah, you are, I just wanted to, like, I mean, this is, you know, this is also for, and when I send this out to get some feedback, is, you know, what is that area? You know, like, after you get some time to think about this and look through that, you know, what is that area, you know, that would give you that confidence, or what is that area that we've missed that, you know, you'd like to see in here?
You may not have missed it at all in what you're doing, it's just, I didn't sense it. That's my personal, in other words, if I was that math teacher that we're talking about, and I would like to know, if I gave that comprehensive, this is what happened on that point.
Can I piggyback off just a little bit? I think, I think we're, all of us always have a hard time, right? SAT, ACT, AP, and CASP are items that none of us in the room will ever get to see until the kid sits for it. So what we have to utilize and rely on is the interim assessment blocks. It's the only practice assessment that's available for the CASP. The PSAT is the only practice assessment that we have access to for the SAT, you know, and the previous AP exams that are retired. So that's what, that was the data points that you saw kind of shuffled throughout the presentation, is those interim assessment blocks are going to be those standards that those students will be assessed on at the end of the year. And what the teachers did, from Dr. Scott to Sarah to the high school with the department chairs, they worked with their teachers to identify, what are the content, what content have we covered thus far? Use that interim assessment block to see if our instruction is effective towards the assessment, and if it isn't, then they're working to start to shift, right? Or they're starting to identify, like, middle school, they're assigning them to Alex, or in the elementary, they're doing the data chance to be able to move those students into an intervention-type program. Same thing at the high school, where they're identifying the students and moving them, whether it's a one-on-one with the school counselor, they're moving them into a learning lab type. So that's where it is, but it's hard when you, not knowing a ton about interim assessment blocks or the PSAT, to be able to see that and look for that chart, right? Like, here's the kid, they're going to move this far by this time. We have to keep looking at those interim assessment blocks to determine, are we making progress to them mastering all the standards by the end of the school year?
Right. Along the same lines as what Michelle was saying, I had this similar thought, that it's very difficult to get a sense of, you know, on a, on a overall level, like, you know, if you break it down by elementary or middle school or high school, how is it tracking? How do you feel, how do you, where do you feel you're at, and are you surprised about where you're at at this time, and what, in which areas, be it math or English language or science? Like, where are you seeing the biggest challenges? I mean, when I'm looking at the numbers, I see they're kind of trending similarly, but, and then there's some gaps, so is it like one fifth grade versus another fifth grade? Is it professional development? Is it the content, the curriculum, like, where are you seeing the biggest challenges at this stage right now to get to where you, where you want to be? And I'd like to have a sense of that by, you know, the different levels, be it elementary, middle school, and high school, based on the assessments that you have done and what you've able, what you've, what you've been able to call from the data. Like, where, where do you see the biggest challenges, and where are the biggest risks for shortfall?
That, Mary, that's a question of more of what, where are we, right? I mean, in relationship to all that, that's, I didn't get that, I'm not talking about the total presentation, I'm talking about more of it in the academic area, because that's where I, to be very honest, to me, that's the most important part of the excellence, is our academics.
Like, are we having a challenge in, you know, is it math, is it English? Like, where are we having, where are we struggling the most, and where, and what, what are the remedies for that right now? I know you're having data chats, I know you're moving the kids around in that way, but is it working thus far? I know it's also early in, but, you know, what are you starting to see now? I think one of the reasons we wanted to have this check-in at this point is so that we could have that conversation and say, what do we need to adjust? Do we need to adjust? Are we just tracking where we thought we were going to be? I would be surprised to hear that we're just tracking exactly how we thought we were going to be, and there's not any new challenges, or some things that are throwing you that you didn't expect, just because it's a different year, and, you know, every year seems a little different with new challenges. So I'm curious to hear a little bit about that.
Yeah, so I mean, if, you know, each site just wants to kind of address that.
Like, go in order?
Let's start, we can start with elementary. I mean, just kind of, again, it's just kind of a snapshot.
I mean, yeah, I mean, there's a communication with parents, there's a communication with teachers, or like, where are you hitting challenges?
Might you ask a specific question? What we're noticing elementary-specific and?
Can you come up real slow, I can hear you better?
I'll actually stand up. What we're noticing mostly in elementary is math, as you've seen from the CASP scores and you saw today. Math is where we're falling down, and it's actually nationwide. So we're trying to figure out where the gap is, and it started kind of at the beginning of Common Core standards. A lot of districts got a lot of training with the Common Core standards, some districts didn't get as much as others. But moving ahead, the computational math our kids can do, it's, the math is so different now with all of the reading, the problem-solving, and explaining your thinking. Our kids, mostly in Beverly Hills for the most part, can computationally solve the problem. The explaining is where we're stuck. So we did, we've been to a few different math conferences, there's another math conference coming up that we're going to be sending some teachers to, we're going to be with Ms. Mayberry's help, we're going to be working with a math committee from our instructional leadership teams, really diving into math, because I think that's where we, Ms. Kaber, jump in with me anytime. No, I didn't mean you have to stand up, sorry. Because I'll talk forever. But that's where, at the elementary level, we're seeing is explain your thinking, because we have genius kids who don't even have to write it out, but they can't tell you how they got there, they just did.
So Craig, I'm glad my colleague brought this up, because I was, I want to piggyback on that and ask, because I had written down, you know, number sense, algorithms, spatial relationships, problem-solving. You're saying problem-solving seems to be kind of the area in?
Critical thinking, thinking.
And critical thinking and explaining.
So do you, did you find that this exercise with the IAVs led you to a more substantiated conclusion about this, where you may not have had that in the past?
The information from the IAVs gave us a place to start, and if you looked at the scores, they weren't as high as we would have expected.
Right.
So we're now having the discussion of, these are the topics that you, as the teachers, chose you wanted to assess, so we were expecting that you would be there with your kids. So the conversation now is, for those who didn't get there, what's the missing piece? And I'll tell you, it's something I've looked at for years. Third grade scores nationwide are relatively okay in math. Fourth grade scores are relatively okay. Fifth grade scores math nationwide, and no one can figure out what the secret is. And you've, you know our fifth grade teachers. They're great teachers, but we can't figure out what the disconnect is, because they're great teachers, they're delivering the material, but it's not transferring to the test, not that the test is everything, that's very important to point out, because our kids are functioning, and they're doing well in math. It's the score on that CASP that we're trying to figure out, and I have a friend that just started working for them, so he's, I got a little bug in his ear to help us figure out what's the disconnect.
So what, can I add?
Yeah, please.
So what I didn't get a chance to say, and what I probably should have said, is that these IAVs are the first time our third graders are on that system. It's a totally new system, right? So huge shout-out to them for any great. So huge shout out to them for any great work that they did. They have to manipulate a screen in a totally different way. They have to look at something completely differently. CASP, the IABs with CASP gives them practice with the type of questions that they're going to ask on CASP. And one of the pieces of that is because it's targeting all sorts of different pieces, the teachers met together, our third grade, fourth grade and fifth grade lead teachers, like, like a subject area specialist, they met together and chose what would be the right IAB that they would, that they would give for both, for all the third grades, for all the fourth grades and all the fifth grades. That's the first time that we've ever done that along the grade level. It's the first time it's really comparative and said, you have to give it by this date. The next step in our process is our instruction. Like, that's really where we are. We keep looking at data and we have to shift the conversation to instruction. So when we shift that conversation, some of our teachers have not hit all the standards that are now going to be assessed on that IAB. So is it, as we go to a data and item analysis, is it that like everyone missed number 15 and some other, you know, other people missed something else? Or is it, are we all over the place or who's the kid that missed that piece? So CASP gives us some more, like, oh, sorry, IABs give us some more really tangible information around where are kids missing? What part of that learning do we not have? Where STAR data, which we use and we can see progress on, which is why we wanted to present you with that data, which is very clear, it's computer adaptive and we never get to see those tests. So then you'll see like a third score may go down because you've gone like up, then you've been able to hit up and then it starts you high the next time and so then you might go down. So it looks different. These IABs give us that. What we need to focus on is like some scope and sequence around math. What does it look like? TK all the way to fifth. We need to work on a pacing guide so that we know that every single fourth grade teacher is teaching this piece and has hit these standards by the 10 weeks so that when we assess, we know that everyone has the same assessment pieces. And that's where if you're like looking at our roadblock, that's what we're talking about. And the other piece of that is, are we focusing on the wrong parts of educational excellence? Like, sorry, the wrong parts of like effect size? When we think that something's excellent in education, does it have a very tiny effect size? Like not the effect of a one year's growth in one year's time, which we've gone over as like a mathematical way of looking at that? Where there's other pieces that we could be putting in that have more than a year. And so do the students that are not quite at grade level, do they actually need some of those interventions that give us more than one year's growth in one year's time? So the answer is instruction.
And I'm going to throw one at you. Gabe asked, what are our asks? We are desperate for substitute teachers. Our substitute teacher pay is not bringing in the quality and the quantity. We need time with our teachers, but we don't have it. It's so frustrating. I actually have a math expert. I'm using Title I money, bringing in a math expert. It's been three years in the making. But the only time I can have her work with teachers is two hours after school where I would love to have her for a full day and then give teachers another full day to take what they've learned and plan. But we don't have enough subs. Every day we're, we're short, almost every day, I can't say every, I don't like that word. We are short sub. So I'm going to, if you want me to get down on my knee and beg for more substitute teacher pay to
Well, it sounds like you're asking for more professional development, having the subs that can come in.
Absolutely.
We, and that, that, you made that, the bigger pool of subs to address that is going to be very difficult because
Exactly.
But I mean, you're asking for more professional time using the subs to take over the classroom.
Correct.
But a question for us.
Michelle had to stop.
Well, can we talk about middle school and high school?
I just wanted to go to middle.
You pre-asked the question, so I want to make sure. So where, what are the roadblocks?
Right, I just want to see, like, I'd like to get a sense of where you, where you think you are today? Where did you think you were going to be? What are the roadblocks? What are the challenges that are going to keep you from hitting the goals?
So I think for the middle school, where, exactly where I thought we would be, I think from where we started last year, kind of coming in new and observing some of the areas that I noticed that needed to improve was common assessments, that that wasn't happening across departments. And I think, you know, the elementary spoke to it too, the instruction. And so I think the IABs are important, but the performance task that we're doing, that's the first time that our departments and across the school are doing common assessments. They're grading them together and then they're discussing the data together. And so it's not perfect yet. The science CER data wasn't perfect. That, I expected that. So, because we're in the beginning stages, the expectation is that it gets better by the end of the year. I think the challenge does fall back on instruction and one of the purposes behind those performance tasks, the skills that we want the kids to have in order to successfully complete them, great. But a secret kind of like backdoor objective with that is to get the teachers to start talking about their instruction. So in math, for example, and that's our biggest area of need, they're really good at the formulas, at the computation. They struggle, the teachers and the students with the critical thinking component, the reasoning and the explaining. And to get a math teacher to shift to teaching that is a very heavy lift. And so the, the CER performance task, you know, the initial reaction to that from a math teacher is, I'm not an English teacher, why do you want me to grade writing? That's not my job. But no, now it is. The standards expect it. The performance task on the CASP is writing and our, on the math CASP is writing and our kids weren't doing that in the classroom. So we're, we're getting there, but we're not there yet. So in terms of like the struggle, it's the instruction. And I think what, where math needs the support is the, the resources. Their book is okay. It's a book that I taught out of eight years ago. So that, they could use some support with that. We're very fortunate with the consultant that we have for the CER. She gave us lots of resources, lots of examples. LA County Department of Ed has a whole free bank of performance tasks that are CER aligned for all content areas, so the teachers have access to that as well. But I think we're where I thought we would be in the beginning. It's still kind of messy. People are still kind of asking questions like, how does this fit in? Like, how do I do this? Like, I'm not sure. But, you know, every staff meeting, we're talking about it, we're doing examples. The, the science teachers are coming back and sharing about how their grading day went, about how their follow-up PD day went. So we're getting there, but it's, it's a, it's a whole school-wide effort. And even the kids too, like are, some of them are, you know, totally yay. And, and I, having experienced doing these performance tasks as a coordinator in a previous district, the high-level honors students struggle the most on these because they are not used to having to justify and explain their reasoning, like the elementary said.
Absolutely.
They can, they can do it in their head, but they can't get it on paper.
And they resent having to explain it.
Yes.
They don't want to.
Yes. And it's a huge skill. And, and really, what we want our students to be able to do is be given a set of data or be given an article to read or a political cartoon and to be able to analyze it and have been taught the knowledge and the skills to be able to answer a question and then back it up with evidence. We're just not there yet, but we'll, we'll eventually get there.
For other middle schools, what, that are performing, that are high performing, how are they addressing that part of the instruction?
I mean, I can think of, coming from Orange County, so like Laguna Beach Unified, they did these performance tasks, they implemented them maybe six years ago. And so like when you look at their test scores, they had 70% or better were met or exceeded standards. So I think that it's really about the thinking and the skills that we need from our students. Our students are great with the, the concepts and the knowledge. So I think it's that, that critical thinking component, the, the open-ended projects, the non-multiple choice questions, the, that type of assessment.
And, and professional development in terms of instruction?
Yes.
Again, I have one other question and this has come up and I know it will come up in the future and I'm just curious to know. The health and welfare benefits, and this is again for someone else on the line here. It said that we were 38 out of 47 districts in the health and welfare benefits. Are we at the top, is that the top or is that the bottom? In other words, my concern is, we're going to hear a lot about that in the next few months. So I want to know, what did that, up at the top or at the bottom?
We're near the bottom. I think, I think what's happened here, kind of year after year, is when you're looking at and you're, it's settling a, a contract, that number begins to shift a bit when, you know, it's the, it's the argument of, you know, do you want this in your pocket, in, in your paycheck or do you want better?
Well, that I understand. So I just wanted to understand that. I know where that comes from, but I just wanted to make sure because the teachers go for more money rather than for the benefits most of the time.
Right.
I mean, that I know. So, but this number means that we're not, we're really bad in terms of what we're giving to benefits from that standpoint then. But they get it in money, they, well, look, we're second in, in what our salaries are.
Yeah. But at, but at some point, we, we have to do with what that data shares with us is that we, we can't just negotiate that away because
No.
We do have people that will then turn down a job.
I just want that for information. I just wanted to know what that was. Does that mean that we're bad at 38 or we're great at 38?
No, we're low, we're low. But it's also, you know, those districts are, we'll get you an updated, it's, sometimes it's hard when you're looking at this kind of data because that was, you know, when you saw the slide, it was 47 districts, you know, for 47, you know, people, it's, those are the number of people that are responding because there's 80 school districts
I was going to say that.
In LA County. So you can see that sometimes that data gets a little skewed because we're second in salary out of 47 that, that returned the salary, you know, like the survey.
I have, I, I mean, the, the report from every, all of the departments and what they were doing, I was, the only one that I really had a question about was the academics ones and that's the one that I feel so close to. But the other question I had, and this only has just a thought, we have a five-year maintenance plan, but I look at that maintenance plan, it isn't five-year. Every year is, you're going out again a little further. So I don't like to hear the word, I mean, I hear the word five-year, but it really is, we shouldn't be thinking like, well, it's a five-year, but there may be something in the third year that we found out that's, so we have to evaluate and maybe, the five-year is always going forward. So there never is an end to it.
It's a rolling plan.
That's, I just wanted to make that
We want them at least to have three years at all times.
Yeah, no, but, yeah. Yeah, I mean, that's part of what
Yeah, it's not, it's not definitive in any way.
Yeah, and so, and again, thank you all for what you did and I really appreciate it. And I'll turn it over to
Mary, did you want to get the high school?
Yes, I'd like to stay on the academics if we could for a little bit. And just, yeah. And also I just wanted to ask Dr. Skon, so we're talking about the fact that it's also a process it sounds like you're in, but as well, I mean, just like Mr. Brugby in terms of substitutes are, you know, being able to have more ability for professional development in terms of giving that feedback. What, is there something that will help accelerate that or to help to ensure the success of that?
We've strategically planned it so that we only have a department out at a time and Andy in the front office is amazing. So we've, I mean, I don't want to say it out loud because I'm going to jinx myself, but we've actually been okay with getting coverage. So I'm like hesitant to say it because now I'm going to curse myself.
Now we know where to go.
One of the things, sorry, one of the things you could do at a middle school or high school is the teachers have open preps, they can cover other teachers.
Yes, and so that's where, that's where Andy is amazing and she like figures out that
That's a good point. Andy has a gift with that.
Yes. So we've, knock on wood, been really okay with our professional development days. Like English was out today because they did a common writing assessment and they had a grading day together. And we had every teacher covered sub-wise. So I'm, I feel like panicked now that I just jinxed myself with this.
My other question is also like in terms of the students that are falling behind in terms of resources for them, in terms of tutoring or the need for specialists to help them bridge the gap.
So we are very fortunate. So we just launched last week tutoring after school free to students.
Actually posted it so the parents would see.
Good. And then we have lunchtime mandatory that students, so we do every 10 weeks, very similar to the elementary school, we, we call them green slips. And the teachers submit and we run our DNF list. And then in our grade level meetings, we determine for each of our high-profile kiddos what interventions we think they need based on kind of what they're presenting. It's kind of like when doctors do rounds and they present a case to a group, that's what we do with the kiddos. And so we determine, do they need mandatory? Do they need after-school tutoring? Do they need a check-in, check-out? Do they need like a buddy to adopt them? And so we sit and we assign them all the interventions. And so kids were sent, parents were sent home letters, kids were notified like, okay, you've been assigned to go to tutoring two days a week after school or you've been assigned to go to mandatory four days a week. And so we're very fortunate that we have the funding through Title I to do all of that.
And is this approach different than last year?
We've increased what we've been doing, yes. Yep. Yeah, we didn't have the after-school last year and the mandatory didn't start until second semester for, but we started it right early.
We also have our DAF check-ins too. So the counselors are going to every kid who's underperforming and bringing them in and giving them strategies on how to improve their practice so that they can be better students.
And then how do they, how do they evaluate whether that's working and that strategy's working? Obviously you have performance, but I mean, how do you keep track of that to ensure that it's
Great question. So I'm going to ask, don't take this away from me next year, but this year I was very fortunate. I have a teacher that has a TOSA period where she's my MTSS, my multi-tiered system of support TOSA. And she has a spreadsheet where she's keeping track of all of our kiddos that need interventions, what interventions have been assigned to them. And then we're monitoring, are they making progress in that system? So please don't take that away.
That's great. I guess last night you fought for that.
My MTSS TOSA. Don't take away this section, please.
No, it's great to hear. And here's, part of what I'm asking is I'm curious, what's different from last year to this year so that we can expect different results?
Share.
So I read, so the, the performance tasks are different, the common assessments across the departments are different, the Alex licenses is different, the after-school tutoring, the MTSS TOSA. I have another TOSA for one period. She's our like professional development TOSA. So she's working with all the departments on the CER performance task. So she meets with teachers, she will go to department meetings to help support that endeavor. She helps facilitate our staff meetings with that professional development. So we try to capitalize on the time that we have to help teach the teachers what they need for that. So all of those things are different from last year to this year. Trying to think of those.
How do you bring the parents in so that they have buy-in, that they are supporting you, you know, and collaborating with you from a home standpoint and reinforcing what you're trying to accomplish?
That's a really, really tough task to do. So we, I mean, it's like any school, we've got some parents that are 100% on board. And then I, I do have parents that, you know, with the Alex stuff, they've sent emails and I've called every single parent that's requested not to have their kids do the Alex and tried to convince them to do it. And then I, they still don't want to. And so I asked them, can you please send me that in writing that you don't want your kid to have this free extra support? And unfortunately, we do have some parents that aren't on board with that, but we're catching more than not.
Right.
I think like the, the parent universities, the PTA, like building those relationships with the parents. So there were a handful of parents that I had to call about the Alex. They're like, oh, okay, all right, well, since you're, you're suggesting it, we'll do it.
Right.
So I think it's that relationship partnership with the parents. It's not perfect.
I don't think also just building on the, the positive results from that would also encourage other parents when they come in. That it's a great thing to do. And maybe that's something that can be in your parent university, although I know likely you probably get very, like the same types of parents that go to parent universities. So it's reaching a broader audience and I'm sure that's a challenge. it's reaching a broader audience, and I'm sure that's a challenge, but always.
But we keep trying.
For sure, yes.
Oh, I, it's me. Jumping back to, I love that you asked, what can we do to get parents involved? We actually have a teacher at the elementary level who's going through a course or a program on teacher education that's being supported by the district, so thank you all for that. She's hoping to, in the future, create a parent center at one of the schools that would be providing support for both of the elementaries. She's an elementary teacher, so she's focused on elementary. I don't know if she would be interested in working at the middle school or not, but to have a full-time person, she provides not parent university, we call them parent ed nights, we're trying to get creative with something. Parent ed nights, not as exciting as parent university.
Right, but you have copies of that task, and another way you can.
Exactly.
Advocate.
Right. So we're trying to increase her visibility. She's now inviting the Hawthorne parents to join. She does the evening presentations. She's on Zoom right now, but we're trying to get them back in person. We just know there's more attendance on Zoom. So we're trying to figure out the balance on that. Thank you for asking that.
Real quickly, I want to jump back into Sari High School. So for the performance task, I'm going to tap on Tim real quickly to speak to that. So I'm not sure if many of you know, but he was a math teacher when I was a coordinator and made him do the performance task. So I actually, when I introduced this to the staff last spring, I had him come so that he could speak from the teacher perspective about it, and so many teachers were like, oh, it was so good to hear from him. And I have not had, and again, knock on wood, I have not had one teacher complain about the performance task, not one say that they're not on board.
Yes.
Thanks. Thank you. So I just, if you wanted, I know you wanted to say something about.
No, I didn't know if you wanted to say so. Just, I was, I was that teacher that didn't want to do it, bought it. I did wholeheartedly stop.
This is your twelve-hour program.
Come on. But but by doing it and what it led to, which we need in our mouth departments, is we then got together as core teachers and talked about the CERs. And so then, how did it work? What what are you doing? And it started leading us to the discussions in our PLC groups where, okay, let's start, every time we have a chapter test, we're going to have two common assessments. Everybody's going to give these two questions. And so then we started talking about that, and that was huge. And that started the conversation to moving us towards the performance task and all of the common core areas that we were trying to work on mathematically. And again, I fought it, but then it 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 made difference. And so we got those conversations going, and I think that's what needs to happen, is because an A in my class might not have been an A in Mr. Stewart's class, but now if we're using the common, the common assessments, we now know where we're all at. The other good thing about it was it started the conversation, hey, I had trouble with your kids scored better on these two questions than mine, and how did you teach that concept? And so now you have that discussion going with teachers in terms of how how we're starting to, you know, discuss and how are we teaching it and what we can do. And now you have that common sharing, which started lending us to a lot of good stuff. Anyway, that's my.
Thank you.
Sure. My napday.
Well, you're getting a whole different.
No, not not really, not really, because you asked earlier, what is, what are the schools who are achieving and being able to measure doing? They're doing what we're doing now, and they're doing what we're developing now. So we're also in a place of development and calibration and alignment. I don't think we're, I spoke about reliability and validity of assessment earlier. We're still developing effective common assessments that are common across the department or the content area. So it's very complicated, and it's important to us that our teachers own the process. And so they are having conversations that, again, we spoke about, this is the first time teachers have done X, Y, Z. We're having a very systemic, procedural, structured, focused collaboration now. So our teachers always collaborate authentically, I mean, sorry, and like, just organically. But now it's a dedicated time to focus, and we're having conversations in a new way, so that we can get the data that we wish we could show you tonight. This, that, this, that. We're not there yet, the data isn't that clean yet. We're talking about asks. One of the asks, one of the things the teachers are constantly asking for, and we would love to have, is more time with them. And they would love more time together to do collaboration. A big challenge has been our schedule in in terms of, there's so many wonderful things going on for our students in the district and at our school, that we need to keep shifting our bell schedule, and we we lose a collaboration meeting. So it's been a little bit choppy. We've lost some really valuable time that needs to be spent together, making decisions, analyzing student work, planning, you know, improved instructional approaches. And we just don't have enough, we haven't had enough time yet.
Is there something that we can do that helps you protect that? Because that, to me, see, that is a priority in terms of, you know, our academic performance and achievement. So I know there's a lot of things going on in how you, and everything becomes really important, obviously, but how do we help support that so that academics is our, you know, it is a major priority? And so how do we protect that and help you protect that, so that you can have that time? Because I would, I'm just guessing that in in the high school, at the high school level, it's got to be the hardest to have that collaboration in many ways.
It is, because there, you know, you have one math teacher, then they'd be teaching at different levels, and so they might have sort of three different teams that they're trying to collaborate in norm with. So it it does present unique challenges, you know, probably somewhat similar to the middle school in that sense, but it's a good question. I would like to give it thought before we answer in terms of how we might better protect it, because some of it is, some of it is just the way the cookie crumbles with holidays, right?
Like this week.
Like this week, for example, we lost collaboration today because of, you know, Veterans Day, which is okay, but so then, how could we make up for that? Two days that we have, you know, two modified bell schedules with collaboration instead of, because it's all, we're always trying to make, with a block schedule, all the minutes come out evenly for every class. So that's part of the puzzle, so. It was not a very clear, concise answer. Let us think about that, and we would love to maybe partner to try to find ways that we could make sacrosanct some of that time.
That all, that all being said, I think that the enormous amount of progress that we've made this year is not necessarily showing up in the quantitative data yet. I have no doubt that it will, because having this plan has sort of forced us in a good way to galvanize in a very focused effort. And the faculty is united and on the same page, we're speaking the same language, we have a shared understanding of where we're going. There's more cohesion now than there has been in some time, and so we are going to see the benefits of that.
We had a conversation with the department chair literally yesterday in anticipation of our new, specifically in anticipation of our department chair meeting, and saw the light bulb go off with that person in terms of like, oh, that that makes sense now, that's how I can talk with my department about how we're going to measure student success in all of these various different levels that they teach, honors, regular, one, two, three, four. So it, you know, where it, it has felt like dog years a little bit, you know, it's it's November, and it it has been, we've been doing this for a little while now, but we are only just past the ten-week mark in in this new process with this new plan, and seeing light bulbs go off even yesterday means that we're getting there. And so hopefully, as we continue to report out to you, we will continue to see progress and sort of that shared understanding.
So I just had, I had something really quick. Dr. Skon, I hate to drag you up again.
Yes, yes.
And you're getting your steps a little bit. Your your CER example in the packet here, is that a current example from your sixth graders or something?
That is one of the fine, like silly ones that we did through.
Okay.
So it's not one of the like academic ones.
Okay, that's, I I wanted to ask that, just because the the writing that I was seeing here is more akin to more upper elementary writing, and I, that's why I wanted to ask first, so it makes sense if it's just kind of more of a.
And that was maybe a month ago.
Yeah, so I I just, I just, I, to to address the issue of the being able to articulate, when I was teaching fourth grade, we had a math specialist at Hancock Park that did this thing called Puzzle of the Week. She wrote these, this whole book, and every week, my students would get this puzzle, and you'd have to write it, you'd have to read it, and then say, be able to articulate what was being asked, what you were being asked to solve specifically, have a plan to solve it, solve it, and then explain, right? And they did this on a weekly basis. So they got comfortable by the time they would get to sixth middle school, they'd be very comfortable being able to articulate those things. I don't know if that's something that you guys utilize in the upper grades there, some sort of weekly problem solving for, in math, but that deals with writing. So, because it seems to be, there's a disconnect between what you're saying is on the test and and so that's just a tool you may want to look into. If I can find it, I can bring it up. That's, that's my concern, is that, you know, in talking about educational excellence, I feel like, I feel like the bar has kind of dropped from where it used to be, you know, that that your your upper elementary kids should be able to be doing stuff that she's doing in sixth and seventh grade, you know, it should start. So when you can, when they get to sixth and seventh grade, they should be able to master it pretty quickly. So you shouldn't, we shouldn't be reinventing the wheel.
And we have talked across the, so I'm the, I'm the one in the middle. So I went first with this, with the, with the CERs and that writing component, and we started this conversation as principals last year about how do we do this? So I I said, I'll do it. And the elementary has already started that conversation with their teachers, and the high school is as well. So ideally, you know, next year, like, they might start it a little bit at the elementary this year, so sixth-grade teachers might have two years of having to really teach it, but like freshman teachers next year, like, they should be able to take it and run with it, because their eighth graders are going to come to them ready. And then ideally, the elementary school is going to take it as well, and then our sixth graders are going to come to us already ready.
And I I hope the data that we're dusting and is coming out from all of this, that you said, it kind of puts you in this framework to, Karen, you said it, right, to to kind of focus, that there's articulation back and forth now, so that the high school can see what's going on in the middle school, be be better prepared. The middle schools can see what is the high school missing, and look at that, and same same across all the the different structures. This, that that was something I was hoping that would come out of this, is that as we kind of expose ourselves more and more to the data and to those little elements that you can actually zero in on and say, hey, these kids are having a problem with this, you know, well, now that maybe explains why those kids, two grades later, are having a problem with this, because we're missing that foundation, right? So hopefully, that continues on an ongoing basis with with the articulation between all the.
Absolutely where we're heading. I mean, right, right to the student in the classroom with the teacher, you know?
It's, I mean, even with the science department going first, and part of why the science went first is the CER is really big with the NGSS and the science and engineering practices, but it is in all four content area frameworks. But one of the things that came out of that grading day, and then the professional development following that grading day, was internally looking at the data, not just across the grade levels or across, you know, elementary, middle school, and high school, but within the science department, them having those conversations between sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade, and then them realizing, okay, they need to do more, and then actually then having a desire to create another performance task and administer another one in spring so that they themselves can see growth. And that's not something that, if I had just mandated that they do it, there wouldn't be the buy-in, and there wouldn't be the investment then in the classroom, but because they got that day, they got actually three days now this year, they got the first training day, they got the grading day, and then they got the follow-up PD day, because they had that time to be able to talk with one another and then figure out, yeah, they want to do, they're invested. And so hopefully, then in the spring, when they redo another performance task, and I didn't expect that from them, we're going to see that growth. I only required one performance task from each department this year. The fact that they want to do it on their own is tremendous progress.
The the challenge, though, is also, and it's kind of rhetorical in nature, is just the pace of life, you know, in in our kids, everything is so instant and so quick that that even to get a student to sit and think and write is a challenge. So it's, you know, it doesn't help us, but it's it's providing these well-established routines that you expect kids to have a model to follow, because they really don't want to sit there and think.
Especially about math.
They're ready to move on. They're ready to move on to something else. And that's a challenge.
That is a problem.
It is, it gets quicker and quicker, as the pace increases, just life, it's it's always going to be a challenge for us.
Thank you.
I have a question, it's it's really for all of you, and I think it, we talked about parent engagement, we talked about a culture of excellence and celebrating excellence, and we brought, we touched on this a little bit in our study session yesterday when we were talking about, how do we motivate the kids to be, you know, motivating their desire for education and, you know, in terms of applying for four-year colleges and really motivating them all the way through? And and I know that I've gotten some feedback from some parents that have talked about, and I don't, I don't know how it works right now, so maybe you can fill me in. But I know that one thing that parents and the kids did before is they would get recognition for the kids that were performing really well, either monthly in the elementary school or quarterly or semester-wise in middle school or the, like, fifth, sixth grade, and then in high school, so that they're always, we're always celebrating the kids that are really achieving, and that also, and that also inspires the teachers, because they're getting that feedback from, like, especially when you're talking about these results, as they're seeing these results and the kids are seeing these results, and they're getting acknowledged for that, and the parents know they're getting acknowledged for that, so that then, they have something that they're latching on to, that, look at my kid, my child did, and how well they're doing in this area. And it's constant dialogue instead of waiting to the end of the year, but it's it's constant. I mean, I think there's a balance, because you don't want to water down the effect, but but how do we keep that culture of celebrating that achievement from an academic standpoint?
It does happen, though, we are. We are, we are, we are celebrating their academic achievement. I mean, it's different at grade level, that's the elementary level, but, I mean, that is happening, and you can speak to that at the middle school.
I'm thinking of it as like a, as a, as a through line, so how do we develop it, not just like here, here, and here, but like, how are we having this conversation to the point when they get to call, applying for colleges, and they're meeting, the parents and the kids are meeting with college counselors and talking about going to school? Like, this is a conversation that started here that keeps developing, and I know you have the college day, and there is, I see the umbrella of it, but I'm just curious, like, have we ever looked at it from above and said, how do we start this dialogue, and how do we get to here with that, wanting to apply to that four-year college, really celebrating and finding your abilities and wanting to continue on learning and really maximizing your academic abilities?
One thing that we do at the middle school that continues to the high school is the use of Naviance.
Yeah, I was going to say, there's, yeah, there's a, there's a, we already have a scope and sequence, I'm going to use that term, from sixth to 12th grade, that our teacher, our school counselors implement, so they utilize the advisory period at the middle school to introduce the Naviance curriculum that.
And something I'm going to add this year is, my, and Rich doesn't know this, but I've already talked to the counselors about it, is that to start that conversation at the end of fifth grade, so the counselors are going to go to the, and I haven't told the elementary school principals this either yet, so so sorry, but that we would do our normal presentation that we do to fifth graders, we have our best in show where kids could come and like scope things out with their parents, and then our counselors would follow up at the elementary schools and do a three-year plan with the kids and get them onto Naviance and start that process, that then ideally, when they go to the high school, the high school counselors would come down and do a four-year plan with them, and so it would start in that fifth grade and kind of continue that conversation about that college and career path.
And you're bringing the parents into that as well?
So that they're part of that process, yes.
So I just wanted to talk a little bit about elementary school, and like, why that's different, and Mr. Brugby, feel free to jump in at any point, but because we grade on standards, the expectation is that a hundred percent of our kids are meeting all a hundred percent of our standards. So because we're not doing percentage-wise, we're not celebrating, you know, all As, we're saying that a three means that you've hit the standard, and there's so many standards that are there, that we're expecting them all to do that. So instead of focusing on a specific achievement piece, we're really working on effort and student skills, and so those fall a lot into like our PBIS awards and like how their students. And so those fall a lot into like our PBIS awards and like how their student-ready behavior, that they're on their way to that path of success. It's kind of when you look at the pathways booklet that we're having complete exposure to everything. So we don't let people opt out of music or art or makerspace or science. All of that stuff is ongoing exposure so that they learn all the foundational skills. And then when they're ready for middle school and that fifth grade transition, they can choose what they like best and what they want to do, and then focus on where their academics are highest, so.
Did they do in the, in the elementary, like the math Olympiad where they have the.
We had, we, pre-COVID, we participated in Science Olympiad. And then I don't know if it's actually back yet. It wasn't back last year, the elementary. So we do have that, so we can look into doing that for this year. We haven't done it since COVID, and we did do the science, like their own elementary science fair, which is like amazing. Just like exciting, like an ability to share, show off all of that. And this year, we have, like, in those sort of smaller areas where we're talking about, it's not quite this, like, core academics, but we have two honor choirs happening this year. We have a huge art program where we're featuring all of, all of those different pieces.
I know, my daughter was in elementary, did math Olympiad where they had problems, they would get problems and they would, you know, the kids got very competitive about.
There is a program, Math Field Day, that I'm not going there yet. Teachers are still warming back up into school.
Yes, I understand.
So people aren't willing to volunteer to do a lot of extra stuff right now. Science Olympiad, we're getting back into it. I really want to start looking at Math Field Day. This is not the right time.
We did do that in middle school, right?
As a, as a math at the elementary, we're doing a math night in the spring. We're doing that math on night. We have our mathletes who at the high school are already competing. So we actually have the organization at the high school that they compete at.
With math counts and science Olympiad.
Correct. So math counts is in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. So we do have a pretty good thread that runs TK to 12th grade for our math students that want to get involved in a program like that.
Science Olympiad made it to state last year.
Yes, Science Olympiad did make it to state.
That was really great.
And secondary science fair coming up.
I do too.
Um, well, I think that wraps up everybody's questions. I, I just want to thank you all for this. I, it's really, really fantastic. I agree. It's so much work. Thank you all. It was really fantastic. And I appreciate it. Well, look forward to our next updates and keep your list at the top of our mind. Thank you very much.
Thanks, everyone. Thanks, Kate.
Want back.